Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We'd like to welcome everybody here in chambers, those who might be participating through Zoom and also through our YouTube channel. We turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite those who would like to participate in our invocation to stand. Our invocation will be given by Pastor Tony Henry of the Kingman Azurian Church, after which I've asked Councilor Ward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to pray for you. Heavenly Father, we just stand before you this evening as humble and thankful people, understanding that all that we are and all that we have is because of your goodness and graces. We thank you for this wonderful country that we are privileged to live in and for the biblical principles upon which it was founded. We thank you for our freedoms and the ability to participate in the process of governing ourselves. May each one of us accept this responsibility with great reverence, honor, and accountability. Father, we thank you for this incredible community of Kingman, and I ask you to bless each person who lives here and help all of us to be good neighbors and friends. Father, I ask you to watch over all of those who work and serve in various ways within our community. Keep us all safe and healthy, and may we be prosperous in all that we endeavor to do. May our lives and our actions and our words just bring glory to you. We thank you also for this special time of year where we remember your sacrifice for us. It's a time of reflection, and may we all feel your loving presence in our lives as we pray for peace in our hurting world. And Father, I thank you again for all that have gathered here tonight, and I pray that as each agenda item is discussed, you will bless the city council with your divine wisdom as they make decisions that affect our community. Give them clarity and direction and vision. Please help them to set aside any selfish ambition and focus only on outcomes that would be beneficial to the Kingman residents and to those who have visited our amazing city. Again, Father, we thank you for this special moment just to stand in your presence, giving thanks for all that we are and for listening to our prayers, and we give you thanks for everything, Father. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero three A three to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, appointments. One A Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission Appointment. The Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission currently has one vacancy of a partial term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four due to the resignation of Joanne Olson. One application from Steve Smith has been received and provided for review to the city liaison, city manager, and staff residency, and voter registration status have have been verified. Staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor Samley, you are assigned to this commission. Would you like to take lead on this?
I am. Thank you. I did review Steve's application. We did meet as well. He would love to have been here, but he's volunteering at the polls today, so I did get to see him earlier today when I voted, and he's very passionate about Kingman. He's a small business owner. He's been very involved with the Chamber of Commerce, so he has a vested interest in Kingman. I think he'll be a great addition to the Park Commission.
With that, is there any questions from council? Would you like to make a motion, then?
Sure. I move that we appoint Steve Smith to the remainder of Commissioner Olson's term, ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number two, call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request the matter be placed on a future agenda. We have some of you who would like to participate tonight, and so we would like to call Mr. Ralph McKee. Would you like to come up? And once again, as a reminder, you do have three minutes to share your thoughts.
It won't take that long, I don't think. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Ralph McKee, and I live in the Legacy subdivision across the street from Wallach Ranch Park. My backyard faces the park. Several years ago, I came before the city council to lower the speed limit from thirty-five miles an hour to twenty-five miles per hour because of the Wallach Ranch Park and the pedestrian traffic, mostly children from the Legacy subdivision, to cross Willow Avenue to the park, which was reduced to twenty-five miles an hour, and I am thankful for the lower speed limit signs. I feel that more needs to be done to slow down the traffic on Willow Avenue. I would like the city council to consider installing the solar flashing LED speed limit signs both north and south on Willow, which tells the drivers their speed and with the posted speed limit sign on the same pole, and to also consider crosswalk paint from the south side of the park by Legacy Drive to the park and north of the park where there is a bicycle and pedestrian crossing. Most people are not doing twenty-five miles an hour, and some days and nights it sounds like a raceway. I think the safety of our children and pedestrians crossing Willow to and from the park should be a high priority in this area. I hope the city council will consider all safety precautions and help prevent a statistic on Willow Avenue around our neighborhood park. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. McKee. Mr. Jack Alexander.
That's me. I have a handout for you.
If you'd like to give those to the city manager, and then she can distribute those to us.
You guys will just... And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for inviting me.
Jack, be sure to move over a little bit more and speak into the mic. Thank you.
Right there. Okay, right there. Thank you for inviting me down. Thank you for your visit to our shop the other day. It was much appreciated. All of you will have received an email from me regarding the sixty-six fest, and the Mark fifth council meeting was interesting. I watched it with great interest, and I observed that Mr. Noble failed to tell you all the truth about the other sixty-six fests around the country. And in the handout that I've, the folder that I'm giving you, you'll see that they're all listed, all the councils' events that Mr. Noble had on his screen. I contacted every one of them personally, looked at their websites, and they all hold their meetings, their events, all of their events, in downtown. None of them hold them anywhere other than in their downtown, and it shows that they are very crowded. Looks like a lot of fun, and we believe that the sixty-six fest here in Kingman should be held in downtown Kingman. Every city, every town that I spoke with holds their events in their downtown. Nobody ever, nobody told me that they had ever held it anywhere other than in their downtown. So why not duplicate success? Why not emulate what these people have done over the years? Some of them have attendance levels of sixty and seventy thousand people. Well, of course, those are bigger communities than we are by a large measure. My opinion is that there is absolutely no rhyme or reason to hold that event anywhere but in downtown Kingman. We just spent seven million dollars beautifying our city, and it's going to be pretty awesome. But even before that, it should have been held downtown Kingman. There's no reason. We have not understood one bit, and none of the merchants that I've spoken with, not one, has ever told me, well, we think it's a good idea to hold it in the so-called Dog Park, which is what Google calls it on Google Maps. They also list it as Lewis Park, okay? And it's a known fact that people are not going to get in their cars after they visit the event up at the park and drive to downtown Kingman. Look for a parking place and go to downtown, because there's nothing going on. In the folder that I provided you each, there are photographs that I have taken each year of the downtown of Kingman, the restaurants inside the stores. It is a morgue in downtown Kingman. There's nothing going on. There's nobody in the restaurants. The streets are dead. Unfair, in my opinion, to the merchants downtown in downtown Kingman. Even Councilmember Eric indicated that he thought it was a hassle at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, whenever it was.
Mr. Alexander, you're out of time.
Oops. Thank you, members, for... Can I have a couple more seconds?
That's, you should finish it with "thank you." I think that's it.
Well, the rest of it is presented to you in the handout. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, speak with you. If you pay a particular attention to what's around the Dog Park or the Lewis Park, you notice there is nothing. There are no businesses, even though Mr. Noble said in an email two years ago that he was holding it in the Dog Park or Lewis Park because he wanted to serve the businesses around the park. There are none. Anyway, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
We appreciate your time.
Mr. Elliot Shalou.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. My name is Elliot Shalou. I've got a prepared statement. Most Kingman residents already know the difficulties identifying available medical professionals for an appointment, medical evaluation, and treatment. Given our recorded and prospective population growth, these tasks will increase proportionally, leaving many residents without needed medical care. Why do we have a shortage of trained medical professionals? We can do better. A fast-growing number of residents are upset about community issues such as road improvement, maintenance, rising taxes, higher water costs, population density, rezoning, infrastructure, and the list goes on. We can do better. Simply said, our city council usually cannot speak or vote on things the city council itself does not put on the agenda. Attendance at council meetings is traditionally low for the average resident, but even with the subliminal current of dissatisfaction, not enough people attend. Where is the community input on agenda items? We can do better. What has stymied the proliferation of better clothing retailers for men and women? We can do better. Today, I'm calling for Kingman to consider a town hall meeting. Town hall meetings are a way for our city council to meet their constituents and hear directly from them on topics of concern. Town hall meetings have been practiced in the U.S. since the late nineteenth century. Historically, no specific rules or guidelines have defined town hall meetings, hence the average citizen may speak directly to the governing body, and they are expected to reply. We can do better. Do we really need a twenty-five-foot fiberglass cowboy to decay in the Arizona sunshine? We can do better. What's happened, what has happened to our small-town western quaintness that attracts so many to settle here? We could do better. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Shalou. Pierre, and I'm sorry, Pierre, I always slaughter your last name. I always slaughter your last name. Langley.
All right. Thank you, City Council. My name is Pierre Langley. I've been a member of this community since nineteen seventy-eight. I am the owner of On Target Enterprise, a gun store on twenty-seven forty-seven Ash Fork Avenue. Been there for twenty-five years. Prior to that, it was Vanco Dry Cleaners, and they were there for about fifty. Unfortunately, I am the low spot on Ash Fork Avenue in that area, and all the water coming off of Navajo and Ash Fork runs through my property. Unfortunately, here recently, Big Red, as everybody calls him, which is Canyon State, has built a five-and-a-half-foot brick wall behind my property, which used to be, shall we say, drainage, so it'd go through my property and then through that property on Valentine and then off onto Airfield. Right now, there's no drainage. There's a block wall, and last night, for a good example, we had about good three feet of water, and my neighbor behind us, who's twenty-seven oh four Ash, Valentine, is my cash, and his property was getting flooded really fast. Luckily, I have a trash pump, and we pump the water out of there so that his house wouldn't get flooded, because his house actually sits lower than mine. I have offered to mitigate the issue by offering money to fix an easement, three foot or something. I'll put rock down there. We'll put a hole in the wall nice and neat. The other offer is an easement across the property along the wall on Valentine, Ash Fork, to Airfield, but there's a piece of property that's owned by Travis Holyoke, and I am willing to offer him thirteen thousand dollars to purchase his piece of property, just so we can go across it to prevent any further flooding. Other issues would be the city fixing Navajo and/or Ash Fork Avenue, as both those streets are very potholey at the moment. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Maybe somebody can do something about this before somebody gets flooded and we have a major issue.
Thank you, Pierre. Mr. Mike. Mike Castle? Cash. Sorry about that, Mike.
Good morning, or good afternoon, I guess it would be now. I'm the opposite side of Pierre's land there. My land is quite a bit lower than the shop, so my brick wall is seeping through the seams about three feet up. I have videos, pictures. We've had the city out and looked at it. We drained it the one time it flooded, the first time. It got drained. It got pushed through. Engineering decided that it was a civil matter. At that point, Pierre and I started talking and kind of conversating that, as much as it may be a civil issue, he's not being civil without costing us civilly out of a pocket a huge amount of expense, that I feel that the city needs to take play before this builder builds the house. The house is not built. The wall that is going, conjoining to that, that would help direct the water, has not been built yet. It's just a footer. I'm sure you guys know Big Red, and he's got a mess, and I just wish that somebody would come out and kind of take a look and see if there's something that we can resolve this as a city and as a team instead of just as a civil issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Jim and Kim Hammersley.
Members of the council, please allow me to take this opportunity to share with you how grateful my wife and I are to the Kingman Police Department. To make a long story short, my daughter was being stalked by somebody in the community. Over the course of two years, my daughter filed six to seven police reports for property damage, vandalism, and with the continued support and diligence of Chief Cooper, excuse me, and all the officers, detectives involved in my daughter's case, the case was finally brought before the court earlier this year, and my daughter's stalker was convicted. Over the course of those two years, it was challenging for the family. The police department was open and receptive, using new innovative technologies available to them, using geodata available on cellphones, newer vehicles tracking locations, routes taken, and time spent at every location, resulting in presenting a solid case to Mohave County District Attorney, which also did an outstanding job handling the case. Special thanks goes to Cameron Pat, prosecutor, and Matt Smith, who leads the county attorney's office. Without the use of technology, the Kingman Police Department would never have been able to charge my daughter's stalker, even though my daughters knew exactly who was following her, slashing her tires multiple times and slashing the convertible top of her car on two separate occasions. They would never have been able to put my daughter's stalker at each location without this valuable geodata. That is why I'm asking and strongly encourage you to heavily fund the police department and technology for the Kingman Police Department during the fine-tuning of this year's budget cycle and future budget cycles. The Kingman Police Department and Chief Cooper relies on being able to use all the tools available to them to make our community safe, and technology is just one critical component. It is important to secure the safety of our community so Kingman will continue to prosper, where business and families will want to live and prosper. Thank you for your time, and I would especially, again, thank the members of the Kingman Police Department, and thank you to the council for your ongoing support of the police department. Jim and Kim Hammersley, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Ms. Teresa, is it Begler?
Bogler.
Bogler. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Teresa Bogler. I've been a citizen of Kingman since two thousand and twelve, and I just wanted to say that the city of Kingman has an important responsibility to its citizens to carefully account for public funds, manage its finances prudently, and plan for the adequate funding of services desired by the public. Page twenty-two of your budget. Estimate to calculate an approximation, quote, state a price for something. I want to specifically thank Councilman Ward for looking out for us, the public. The last council, the last meeting, Councilman Ward questioned five items on the agenda. Three were estimates that required additional funding, and two were contracts with Sunrise Engineering that were not to exceed the contracted amount, but they needed more funds to complete. So now we have to commit to over four hundred thousand dollars to get these things completed. This is not good planning on the part of the individuals involved with these projects. Gov HR USA is an executive search firm out of Illinois who work on retainer. So I'm going to estimate that we spent between forty and forty-five thousand dollars to, for them to source and help us hire a city manager, but he was already in our system. I hope that the retainer will help you replace Mr. Walsh's position as Director of Development Services for the county, because we know they need all the help they can get. A consultant was hired to perform a wage analysis so that we could increase the salaries of our police and fire departments. The HR department should have been capable of doing this, or did anyone bother to reach out to SHRM in Bullhead City, which is Society of Human Resource Managers? Certified HR professionals need to keep their certifications up to date, and they do this through specific projects and studies. They could have done the analysis if the Kingman HR department could not, and they would have done it for free. They also have access to information from across, from across the country that could help as well with recruiting, retention, wage analysis, and benefits review, to name a few HR functions, and the HR department can also join SHRM. A few months ago, forty-five thousand dollars was approved to do a study on would Kingman benefit from an event center? Why pay a consultant? Why don't you just ask the public? Put a notice on Facebook, on the electronic signs around the news, around town, or in the newspaper. I will bet none of you run your homes or your businesses relying on consultants to tell you what to do. It would be great to see some of the money spent on consultants and other things, on roads, helping police and fire with drugs and gangs we are seeing an increase in. Don't just give assignments to consultants. We have skin in the game. We love our community.
Thanks, Ms. Bogler. That is the end of our call to the public, comments from the public, and of course, once again, I would remind you that city staff and council have heard your comments and will address those comments. Item number three, oh, one more. Okay, thank you. Item number three on our agenda, consent agenda, all matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, have we all had a chance to take a look at the consent agenda? There's six items on it. Is there any item that needs to be pulled and discussed? I'm sorry, five items. Okay, hearing none. Can we have a motion then to approve our consent agenda, item number three?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, old business, we have none. Item number five, new business, five A consideration of exception request to connect to sewer, APN three twenty-two dash thirty-one dash zero three five. Staff has received a request for a sewer exception from Sam Elters for a single parcel at twenty-seven forty-three Broken Arrow. That's parcel three twenty-two dash thirty-one dash zero three five. The applicant's appeal was heard by the Municipal Utility Commission on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. The commission voted to approve the requested exception. All exception requests must be approved by the city council. Staff recommends denial of the exception request. Okay, Deputy City Manager, who are we picking on tonight?
We are going to ask Mr. Mike Garmon to share some information, and just so you know, Mike, the site map is loaded in case you wanted to share that at all.
Right. That's what I was going to try to get, access to the site map.
Aaron heard you.
Um, there are no sewer in the area.
That one.
He's within the... Thank you. No. I haven't been to much. That was last time I'm PNZ. Probably. And if I am, I haven't been there.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. As the agenda item, agenda item says the Municipal Utility Commission voted to approve the acceptance, so those, they're always referred to city council because the commission doesn't have the... the approval, the authority. Um, it's generally the policy of the engineering department to always recommend connection to sewer because it's the city's advantage to do so. Uh, mainly because the extension allows other future users to connect and also the city gets sewer revenue from the, from the connection. Um, the parcel in question is 322 dash 31 dash zero 35. As you can see on the layout, it's a little less than 500 feet. It's about 489 feet to the corner of the lot. The, um, utility regulations say that if you're within 500 feet, you're, you're supposed to connect to the sewer. Uh, it also says that you should extend the sewer across both frontages of your property. Um, I believe the main reason that the commission voted to approve the, the exception in this case is because this guy here on the lot, on the corner, um, got an exception previously. So I can certainly understand why they voted the way they did. I'm just here to kind of present the facts to you if you have any questions.
Mike, which corner again, point that out? Which parcel? Well, you had the exception before?
So the guy here on the east.
Oh, the vacant, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, questions for Mike? Counselor Saly?
Um, so you had just mentioned this, he's gonna, he would have to extend across Pinto and down Broken Arrow, is that right?
That's correct.
How many feet is that? To do the whole thing from?
Just looking at it, it's, it's probably more than, I would say in addition to the, the 489 feet that he's got to do to get to the corner, it's probably going to be another 500 feet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I did have a question.
I mean, Vice Mayor?
Yes. Um, everybody else is on, uh, septic, is that correct?
Yes, I think he's, I think he's, the applicant stated that most of his neighbors on septic.
Okay. Um, I know that there was a cost estimate. Um, I did watch the Muck meeting. I know there was a cost estimate from, uh, the applicant. Uh, do you have that? I did not write that down.
The, the letter from Mr. Elters said that it's going to be in excess of $50,000.
Just to?
Just to extend it.
Bring the sewer. That's before he even starts building, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Oh, I do see that. Thank you. Um, okay. And the variance, I remember, I recall this variance on parcel 012. Um, it wasn't that long ago, within the last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was probably before I got here, so I would assume it's fairly recent.
And all the other, uh, neighbors that are on, uh, septic have been on septic for approximately how long?
That's a really good question. I don't know the answer to that. I think when we discussed it at Muck, um, that they mentioned 20 years or so that most of those neighbors had been on septic.
Okay. And this would qualify for a payback?
It would.
But those that hook up, their septic would have to fail to then have to hook up and then the payback?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I had, um, mainly for clarification.
Counselor Walker, you have a que- you have a comment or question?
Yeah, there, well, we were talking about who the liaison is. That's vacant right now.
That's right.
And I, and I would be willing to take it. If I knew it was vacant, I would be going to those meetings. So in the future.
And who, I know you mentioned who had it before.
I think it was Cameron.
Cameron Pat. So actually Counselor Eric and.
Can you use your mic, please?
So February's was canceled and then?
Okay.
Uh, this one's coming up later this month.
And were you able to attend the January meeting?
No, that one was when I was out of town.
Okay. No, no problem.
I clocked in and it was a really short meeting.
Sounds like Vice Mayor did her homework. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I.
Oh, yes, Counselor Ward?
We gave the other one and it wasn't nearly as far as this one. I ca- I can't see the exorbitant cost for one person and he's never going to get the payback on it because those septic systems have taken care of fast and definitely. I, I just, I agree with the.
Okay. Um, I will echo in on that, on Counselor Saly and Counselor Ward's comments because you asked, it was already, it's, it's going to be close to 500 feet or at 500 feet or more. And that hits our threshold anyway. And so, and once again, there's not going to be any payback because we already granted it to the other party. So I would say we also, uh, grant this, this variance.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to second.
Is it, did, did you want to make a comment?
Did, did you need to hear from the applicant?
I just.
I know.
I know he spoke at the Muck meeting, so I did hear what he had to say.
Sam, would you like to come up and have a, it's? And I know you're not microphone shy. You can't use that excuse.
I am. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Sam Elters. I'm here as a city resident. Um, so really in a nutshell, we purchased this parcel in 1996 with intent to build a home on it. Um, and we've been obviously paying property taxes on it since then. Um, it just seems like every time we tried to build, life happened and we had obstacles and challenges. Um, the area continued to develop around us and then we ended up leaving city of Kingman altogether, going away for about 15 years and returned back recently. And we hung on to this parcel all along thinking someday we would come back and build on it. So, um, in the process, uh, the area not only built out, all on septic by the way, but also this, the sewer system came in and as you heard, it's about 490 feet away just to the lot line. So, um, we were informed that we need to connect to it. I reached out to local contractor, said what would it cost me? Here's the line size, um, couple of manholes and, um, we were informed that the manholes would be about $7,500 each and the line would be $85 per linear foot. And that includes, um, sock cutting, excavating existing roadway, backfilling properly and paving. When you do the math, that gets a little over $50,000 and, uh, we believe that is excessive for one property owner. Uh, we really, um, we, we think we should be treated like the other property owners around us, as you see from the photo, except for the one vacant lot, which has already gotten approval for an exception. The others are already there and they are on septic. So the payback agreement, uh, may never materialize. Um, so with all that, uh, I thought it would be appropriate to come before you, ask you in the most respectful way I can to consider this, um, exception. And so we would be like the rest of our neighbors, um, as far as, uh, being on septic until such time when the line is extended and everybody can connect to it. That's all I have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Any, any questions or comments from Mr. Elters? Okay, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Can we then, it sounds like Mayor, I mean Vice Mayor, you ready to make a motion? Can we have a motion then on item five A, consideration of exception request to connect to sewer on parcel 322 dash 31 dash zero 35?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any, any other comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five B, consideration of applicant's request for street improvement deferral for a portion of Evan Street. Journey Church owns 5.73 acre parcel, three, which is 320 dash zero two dash one seven three and a 1.69 acre 320, which is parcel 320 dash zero two dash one six three, parcel at the northeast corner of Bank Street and Keno Avenue.
Yep.
Section 11 of the city of Kingman Streets and Sidewalks Development Rules and Regulations, Street Policy requires that non-improved streets be improved at the time of development across the full frontage of the parcel being developed. The Traffic Safety Committee, TSC, reviewed this request on July 30th, 2023 and the criteria within section two dash two E for granting a deferral. The consensus of the TSC was that the right-of-way be maintained and deferral cash in lieu of installing the street improvements. If the council agrees to grant a deferral, city staff will bring a resolution to council at a future meeting for approval. As part of that resolution, council may designate such conditions as it deems necessary to secure the intent and purpose of the street policy by requiring such guarantee and evidence that such conditions will be completed with. And it's of course up to our council discretion. Sean, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you today? Um, so essentially, uh, it says, it says what it says. The applicant is asking for a deferral of the, um, street improvements on Evan Street. I'm trying to pull up, uh, aerial photo, kind of put some, it's going to be on the hard drive or on the actual computer. Sorry, I was talking to IT guys.
Which one is yours?
This one right here. Perfect. Thanks, Annie. I like smart people. Okay, so, so essentially I just want, kind of wanted to go through, give you a little bit more information on this. Um, maybe. Okay, so essentially the request is for a deferral in cash lieu. Um, and then this is the, the property site. Um, information on this presentation is a little bit different since we've, uh, submitted this to you. The applicant and property owner has actually combined the two different parcels. It's in, it's one parcel now. So this is all seven point one four two acres. Um, and Keno and Bank Street. Um, uh, basically the section 1.1 of the streets and sidewalks development rules say at the time of development, that would have to be developed, which would be, um, s- street, half street plus eight feet and sidewalks, gutters, all that fun stuff. Um, this did go before the Traffic Safety Committee, um, back in July and, um, we, we went through all the, of the process of looking to see if this would meet the criteria for a deferral. Um, and the recommendation is that the street improvements be deferred, uh, with cash in lieu of for, for the, that development. And then the city would continue to maintain that until, um, further development would occur in that area. Um, just picture here again is just kind of showing you, this, this right here is kind of the area that would be required to be developed. Um, and then I have, um, some other pictures that the applicant has as well. Um, kind of give you a bit of an idea. Um, in your, in your packet, there should have been a, um, concept of what they're looking to do. Um, they're not, they're not looking to have any access to Evan Street at all. They're actually looking to fence that off to have their property be completely towards Bank Street. Um, so, um, essentially it's up to you guys and I'm here to ask, answer any more questions if you have any.
Counsel, any questions for Sean? Yes, Counsel Savage.
So there'd be no ingress or egress off of Evans, correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
And the applicant is, the representative of the applicant is here as well if you guys have questions for them.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ross? Yes, Counselor Saly?
Yeah, uh, my question is, um, deferred until when? And I know you're saying until there's more development, but they have the whole lot. So what else?
So it would be until a, I apologize, I don't remember what it's called, but it would be until the, there would be an improvement district, uh, implemented in the, in, in that area. So all of the, uh, residents in the area would have to agree for there to be essentially an improvement district and the entire streets and sidewalks would be improved.
Are we planning on, uh, organizing that? Do we have plans to create an improvement district type?
I'm not sure. Um, I know that Jack Plonny, um, has, has talked about that, but we talk about that a lot. It's something that's somewhat difficult to do. So I, I can't answer that.
And then what happens to that money? We're holding on to it and saying, we're going to hold on to this until a later date for this improvement district that probably isn't going to happen unless the city convinces the neighbors, right? So then what happens to that money?
We have had that instance and it sits in an account and waits. There is, um, currently we don't have necessarily timeframes associated with those. So, um, those monies just sit in a city account and wait until at some point an improvement district is created, uh, whether that be initiated by the city or initiated by the property owners. Um, but it, it will just sit.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Eric?
I had two questions. One, just to kind of follow up on that. Tina, does that waiting money have any benefit gaining interest or does it just lose inflation or anything like that?
It definitely loses inflation.
Okay.
But it does earn interest.
Okay. Um, so it's a 483 foot contact point with Evan Street, right? Would that be the only improved section of Evan Street?
Of Evan Street, yes. So there.
So it would just be a patch of asphalt in the middle of?
Yes.
The desert?
Yes.
That's all. Thank you, Counsel.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
It would be half plus 18, correct?
Half plus eight.
Eight.
Yeah.
Yes. I always say 18. I don't know why I do that. Half plus eight.
Yes.
So, um, currently the city is maintaining this road?
Correct. It's a, it's a dirt road in, in the city.
It's, it's in our network.
Yes.
Okay. But it is, and it is being maintained. Um, are there any restrictions that we can put that they never have an ingress egress on that backside?
Not currently at this point in time. Uh, when we come back with a resolution, depending upon what your direction is, we, we can come back with a, a resolution and at that time you can add that stuff to that.
Because I, I mean, the way I feel about it, if they put up a fence, um, now and we don't restrict the fact that there is never ingress egress on that backside, then who's to say that fence can't go away and then we have the traffic pattern changes on that road?
Right. And that's, I, that's, that's something that can be looked at at that time as well because they, they wouldn't be able to just do that if they wanted to. There would obviously be right-of-way permits and things that they would have to do to have access to the roadway.
Okay. So they would have to go through that process.
Correct.
It would still have to come before council.
Correct.
Regardless of whether we said no ingress egress.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
So we put the restriction on right now until they decide if they wanted, you know, egress from it, then we can say, no, you have to, now you have to pave it.
At, at that, yes.
At that time.
So when, when we come back to you with what your direction is on this, on whether you're going to grant or deny, if you are going to grant it, then we have to come back with a resolution.
Sean, of that total block from Keno up to Gordon, sort of just rough estimate, is that what, about a third of the distance?
Um, I would say it's, it would be less than a third. It's not, it's not very, so from, from Keno to Gordon, um, I would say.
I might drove by today, but I didn't count the lots, you know, while the, from there.
We could, we could do that.
It's a, it's a chunk, but.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know what the distance, I can get, I can get the distance and then bring that back to you. Um.
Well, on the one hand, we'd love to see that paved. On the other hand, we would have another half street plus eight existing in the city where we see that as disastrous in some of the other places. And it makes it harder for us to even maintain as a dirt road. Um.
Well, and what would that do to the property values on the other side of the street that the other, less than half?
Right.
That, you know, so I don't know, I.
Keep in mind too, they will be, um, developing along Keno, adding in a turn lane on Keno as well. Um, there's, there's other development that is going to be occurring for that area that's already developed, but, um, as far as along Evan Street, that's kind of.
Well, Shawn, you bring up a good point, looking at that too. On Keno, they are going to go ahead and put in sidewalk and curb on that, on that side? And of course, with entrances into their property.
Correct.
Okay, so that'll improve that, that'll improve Keno.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Walker?
Yeah, I do. If they were to go ahead and pave this now, it causes a little bit of maintenance problems, and that road's going to be deteriorating. I mean, they're putting the money up now, so I mean, I don't think it... It'd be nice to have it now, but at the same time, for us as a city to maintain it, we're dealing with dirt on both sides, three sides of it, that we have to... And then, when they come in and build this subdivision out anyhow, as an improvement district, are they going to take all this out? Because it doesn't line up exactly the way the new design is? So maybe we are better off waiting.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Any more comments or que...? Yes, Counsel Saly.
I'd just add that I think, going forward, the smart thing to do would be to create a policy that when this situation comes up, we contact the people on the other side of the street, all the homeowners or property owners, to see if they would like to get their side of the street paved and then make that one big project so you can pave, so you can pave the whole road and get it all improved. You know, at this point, we're guessing, you know, maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't. But if we had just contacted all of these property owners, maybe they would have said, "Yeah, we would love to ante up to get this road paved." You know, there's, it's so much, it's terrible living on a dirt road, I'll tell you. You know, it's, you have a lot of dust, you have a lot of problems, so they might have wanted to pay for that. So I'd like to see some kind of policy, and maybe it's part of our street payback program, where before it comes to council, we do reach out to the property owners and see where they're at in being interested in investing in their street so that we're not talking about half-streets anymore or possible down-the-road investments. We just ask them at the time. That's all.
You're right, it's a good comment. And basically, an improvement district would need to be formed. And I don't, actually, when I was growing up in Phoenix, we lived on a dirt street. My dad was active in doing an improvement district, and we paved the road. But they were able to get, you know, he went door-to-door knocking on the doors. Is that something the city we do? Or is that something one of the homeowners takes on? I don't, I don't know. Deputy?
I'm not, I'm not sure on that either. I don't, I, it's outside of my realm.
Because you bring up a good point, Counselor. You know, who would spearhead that project if that needed to happen? Or is that something we need to incorporate into city, deputy city manager?
So we already have improvement district statutes that we follow, right? And certainly, the city could reach out. No matter what, it's going to take a vote of the property owners, and they'll have to agree. But we have had people approach us with the interest of doing that. And I don't believe it violates any sort of statute for us to do the outreach and find out what, you know, the interest.
Thank you, Tina. Okay, any other comments or questions from counsel? Do we need any more comments for the property owners? That need to be asked? Okay, seeing none? Oh, would you like to make a comment? Yes, if you'd like to come up, please state your name. And of course, you're representing the church.
Thank you. I'm Rex Rugi, on behalf of Journey Church. I actually, those were actually my slides. I don't know how to get to them.
Shawn, you want to help? Thanks.
So I only, I have this one thing, but I have to...
I can do it different so the people on Zoom can see.
All right, I got you. I didn't open up all of them.
Yeah. Which ones, which ones did you want?
Yeah, I'm going to go right in order, one through five.
So you want all of these opened?
You can click the button if you want. One, four properties here and two here. And if they put ingress and egress here, they're going to get more traffic there.
So they're all different, and we have to share the screen? Do you know how to do that?
No, I don't. Because putting in half plus eight, I've done that, and the other people, they never come, come in. They're just like, "Look, I got asphalt close."
So you have to do it through the Zoom? For each one, it has to be done separately? So you have to click Share Screen?
They're not going to use it for ingress.
Pick whichever one it is.
If they're going to cause more dust, it needs to happen.
Share.
I think that's fair.
And then, it's there. So you'll, and then you'll have to do that for each one.
If they're right, I have. Just in case this was hard to use, I did bring paper copies. So thank you, thank you, council members. Again, my name is Rex Rugi, and I'm here on behalf of Journey, located 3782 North Bank Street. And we've started construction on this new 24,000-square-foot worship center on our existing campus. And as a part of the city's review of this project, we have been required to make street improvements on the east property line, which is Evans Street. And I would like to point out that our project, actually, the front is on Bank Street and also on Keno. We actually have, we front on three streets. Slide two. Are we on slide two?
Sorry. Aaron, I got it.
These are all going to go very quickly, so you probably won't even have time to sit down. We've always tried to have a positive impact on our community. And the biggest concern our neighbors brought up during the community meetings that we were required to have last August was the dust from cars driving on Evans Street. With that in mind, during the design of the building and the planning of the campus, we deliberately eliminated all access into Evans Street. And furthermore, we'll be blocking, as Shawn pointed out, we'll be building a block wall along the entire east wall, so we'll have no access to that street whatsoever. Slide three. Actually, you can go just slide four if it's easier. We'll skip three, just to make it easier. Exceptions. Now, it's per the city's Streets and Sidewalks Development Rules and Regulations, we're asking that the street improvements on Evans be waived. We're not interested in paying cash at this time. We would like the requirements waived altogether. On page 26 and 27 of Kingman's requirements, if you look there, it says that city council may defer street improvements for the following reasons. The property fronts on a street that is 90% or more developed, and such improvements would serve no benefit to the overall block. I believe that's, this is a textbook example of that. And if we go to the next slide, yeah. This will actually answer your other question.
We have to share it, so you can't just click to the next thing.
So if you can see there, just east of our property is Evans. It's completely dirt, and it is completely built out. Maybe somebody will build another garage someday, I don't know. There's no plans, as I know of, to improve the street by the city. And improving a small portion of the street, again, ours is just that 483, the equivalent of three of the lots on the entire block, makes no sense whatsoever. As you said, it's going to be a maintenance nightmare. You're going to ruin the edges of the asphalt because we're being required to go eight foot past the middle, so people will be one wheel on the paving, one wheel off the paving, and they'll be going onto the paving, off of the paving. So in summary, if the city would, we would ask that you would waive the street improvement requirements on Evans Street altogether for us. And again, you have a mechanism through the street improvements. If there ever was an assessment district, we'd be more than happy at that time to be a part of that. But we don't feel there's any need right now to do anything. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question to ask you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Okay. And are you Ann?
Andra.
Andra, uh-huh, yes, Andra. Could you pull the mic down towards you a little bit? So there we go.
Yes, there we go. Mr. Mayor and the members of the council, first of all, thank you for your service to our city. And I am a property owner on Keno. I'm also a member of Journey Church. And I want to say, yes, I agree totally with what Mr. Rex said, was that having to pay 60,000 to 80,000 right now and just let it sit in a savings account would be very difficult for our building project. It is a block wall. It's not a fence. And so, it's something that would have to, if we ever said, "Yes, we want entry and exit," it wouldn't just be, you know, cutting some chain. And we don't plan, from what I have been at the meetings, because I'm a property owner there, on having that. And if there was an improvement district, we would definitely, you know, participate on whatever the majority wanted to do. But that is my request as a property owner. I'm on Keno, across the street from the church, is that no money be put forward. This be completely approved because the frontage in the information is not on Evans. The frontage is on Bank Street. And we, you can't have too many front yards, I suppose, in Kingman, but I think one is plenty. And the frontage is on Bank Street, which is already improved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Okay, counsel. Any other discussion on this matter? Okay. I, anyway, I think we should, I, once again, they are going to make the improvements on Keno. A block wall will serve as a purpose. If we put the exception that if there is, if they desire to have an egress or digress from there, we put that in, I think we just, we should grant the deferral, is my opinion on it.
I agree. I think as long as it's worded that way, they've already stated they're willing to participate in an improvement district if one comes up. I'm with it.
And with that, with that language in that, in that agreement also.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I propose that. Any other comments on that?
Can I just get clarification on the deferral? Are you talking a cash deferral or a total deferral?
Total deferral.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion then.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 5C, Authorization to Approve Change Order Number Six to the Haley and Aldrich Contract for the Airport Dross Remediation Site. This item is for consideration and approval of a change order for the Airport Dross Remediation Project. Although ample investigation was completed, it was still anticipated that additional dross may be encountered. A contingency fund was included as part of the contract to address issues found during the project. The attached change order will accomplish the additional excavation, transport, and disposal required for remediation. The additional excavation will not impact the project's final paving schedule. Staff recommends approval. Jack, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So as it says, this is a change order to the contingency funds. I want to just highlight that piece. So ample investigation was done during design, trying to establish what the extent of the dross was, both horizontally and vertically, because some of the excavations that Haley and Aldrich have made down there have been pretty significant, trying to reach the bottom of those. And so, during the excavation, you know, we found that some cells were larger than anticipated because when you're doing a grid of boreings and taking samples, you're getting a snapshot of that window. And so, they actually, during excavation, found a trench that wasn't caught in any of the boreings. And so, added a pretty significant amount of dross. Most of that expense is in trucking, or I'm sorry, not trucking, transport and disposal, because these are being loaded on a train and exported out to a disposals facility. And so, a healthy contingency was carried, which was also provided from the feds for the cleanup, the remediation, and that was set to the side. So the base contract amount is what was approved. The contingency was sitting there. But the way that was set up, we need to come back and ask to be able to use that funds, which is what we're doing today. And so, that is $4,287,068 cents, or I'm sorry, $68.85. And that will complete, so let me back up. The, at the time that this was being prepared, they found the trench, and Haley and Aldrich did some additional investigation, trying to, again, estimate the extent, because until you actually excavate it out of the ground, sometimes that's difficult. And so, that was the worst-case scenario. So there's a possibility that we're going to underrun on this value. They figured out what, you know, the least amount would be, and then the most, the worst-case scenario. And so, what that reflects tonight is the work, again, to excavate and dispose of that material, and then ultimately, backfill the hole. And that will actually reduce our contingency amount. We'll still have $3.9 million remaining in that contingency. And with that, I try and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, counsel, any questions for Mr. Plonting? Counsel Saly?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Jack. Thanks for all the information. I know we were worried that this would happen, and I just wanted to highlight, you said it, but I want to highlight that these funds are coming from the Department of Justice. This is not coming out of the city's general fund. The Department of Justice had to pay for this because they were the ones that decided to melt the planes and then bury them under the ground, which has caused a lot of problems. So I just, I just sort of wanted to underline that, that this is federal funds.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Yes, Counsel Eric.
Do you suspect any other things that might come up that might use contingency funds?
Likely not. I don't want to steal Doug's thunder. Really, he should be the guy here telling you that the excavation is complete and that testing has confirmed that they have, they have found the extent of the dross within this cleanup area. And so, that is phase, the final phase, phase three. So likely, seeing any change orders, I don't want to stick my foot in my mouth, but I would say no.
Thank you.
Jack, what was that amount again? It was going to be, it's a final, when it's all said and done, leftover? Hopefully, if we have no other contingencies, contingency?
So, yeah, 3.9 million is what would be remaining in contingency, assuming we use the total amount we're requesting.
Right. And of course, we're blessed that we, and thankful that we have that contingency program, that money is available to us, as Counsel Saly stated. And of course, with the understanding that we don't, as a city, get to keep all that 3.9, we are sharing that as part, as part of the contract with Aldrich, Haley and Aldrich, right?
That is correct. And so, there's some legal fees that come off the top of that, and then per the contract, there was a split in that contract.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood all that. So we'd love to have all 3.9, but it's not going to happen.
We would. Honestly, as you mentioned, the contingency sitting there, because anytime you can plan whatever you want, when you start moving dirt, you know, Haley and Aldrich, they did a lot of investigation trying to lay this out, but ultimately, you have the, you run the risk of finding additional material, which they did.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Plonting? Okay, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
With that then, can we have a motion then for item 5C, Authorization to Approve Change Order Number Six to the Haley and Aldrich Contract for the Airport Dross Remediation Project?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5D, Consideration to Execute a Letter of Intent to Sign a Coalition Memo of Agreement, an MOA, for the I-40 Transportation Corridor. The New Mexico Environment Department, NMED, will lead a Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, CPRG, Coalition Implementation Application for the I-40 Transportation Corridor Initiative that will provide clean energy refueling stations along I-40 to facilitate the sustainability... that will provide clean energy refueling stations along I-40 to facilitate the sustainable transport of goods from the Port of Los Angeles to Arizona, New Mexico, Oklahoma, and beyond. The coalition structure currently includes NMED as the coalition leader, and the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, and Bernalillo County, New Mexico, as coalition members. NMED is seeking the City of Kingman to serve as a coalition member. Staff recommends counsel execute a letter of intent to sign a coalition MOA for the I-40 Transportation Corridor. Tina Maline.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So this is really a continuation item from our work session earlier. And Mayor, thank you for the summary. I think that summed it up pretty well. But what this is doing, as I shared, is it is, the city would give its intent to join the coalition and applying for this grant. I believe it is close to five hundred million dollars that New Mexico will be applying for. State of Oklahoma is on board with this as well. We shared why we're being asked to join this coalition, and we would receive a portion of the funds at some point if, it's a very competitive grant, but if we were to receive any of the monies that we're requesting, then at that point, there would be a memorandum of agreement, as I described earlier, similar to what other agencies have entered in with us when we're awarded monies and we distribute them. And we would have to comply then with all of the requirements of the grant and all of the reporting mechanisms, just ensuring that we are going to be meeting our grant assurances. So with that, we still have Mr. Wasserman and Ms. Yates with us in the event you have any questions about this grant or the different projects that could be utilized with the funding of the grant.
Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome.
Any questions? I think from our work session, we had a lot of information. And I know some of you had questions, so I guess if there were any other questions you wanted to share, you could, at this point in time, get those answered. Sean, Counselor?
Oklahoma. Okay, right now, we're talking Albuquerque. When's the plan to hopefully expand to Oklahoma?
I guess, Adam, if you'd, we'd like to invite Mr. Wasserman, if you'd like to come forward.
So New Mexico, State of New Mexico, reached out to State of Arizona and Oklahoma to join. Oklahoma did join. As we understand it, the State of New Mexico is applying for the funds, and those would be distributed by the plan that is actually produced and submitted. I don't think it's final, but the intention, as we've understood it, is to provide some investment along the corridor in each of these areas. So if four or five hundred million dollars applied for and was received, they would get their share. It would go to them to implement, as it might come to Kingman and Winslow separately.
Any other questions? Counselor Eric?
If funds are appropriated to Kingman, not the State of Arizona, correct?
Correct.
So it would come to the city. Okay, that was just-
It would be the City of Kingman, the City of Winslow, the states of New Mexico, and the states of Oklahoma. You are functioning as a state.
As part of that coalition.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Adam. Can we have a motion then of item, for recommending item 5D, Consideration to Execute a Letter of Intent to Sign a Coalition Memo of Agreement for the I-40 Transportation Corridor?
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item 5E, Consideration to Approve Amending the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget Calendar. The annual budget adoption process is lengthy and involves many steps. One of those steps is to hold a strategic planning council retreat to identify the council's top priorities and initiatives to be incorporated into the upcoming fiscal year's adopted budget. In order to meet the budget adoption timelines, this would have necessitated a strategic planning council retreat be held in mid-January. With the absence of a permanent city manager, city staff did not schedule a strategic planning retreat for the fiscal year 2425 budget adoption process. Council has requested a retreat be scheduled and that the soon-to-be permanent city manager be invited to attend. City staff was able to secure April 11th as a strategic planning council retreat and has developed an amended fiscal year 2024-25 budget adoption calendar for council's consideration. Staff recommends approval. Once again, our deputy city manager, Tina Maline.
Thank you very much. So city staff heard counsel loud and clear at the Historic Electric Vehicle Foundation work session, that even though we did not have a permanent city manager in place, it was necessary to still hold a planning retreat. And so in doing so, as the mayor alluded to in his summary, we were able to ask Tim Walsh to attend prior to his start date with the city. However, in doing so, that will require us to push the budget adoption timelines out by a few weeks. The proposed schedule is in the communication. I have heard from a few different council members that it either works or doesn't work, but ultimately, we're looking for either some discussion on changing some dates or adopting or approving the proposed schedule that is in your communication this evening.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Any comments or questions for Tina? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a motion then? Approving item 5E, Consideration to Approve Amending the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget Calendar.
Same move. I'll second.
Do we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Item 5F, Adopt a Notice of Intent to Increase Water Rates and Set a Public Hearing Date. In fiscal year 2023, 2022, 2023, Wilden Financial Services was hired to complete a water rate study, which resulted in the adoption of new water rates that became effective on July 6th, 2023. The water rate schedule, the water rate study included a five-year plan with proposed annual rate increases through the fiscal year 2027-28. As was recommended in the water rate study, the city must update the revenue sufficiency portion of the study each year to, one, ensure projected revenue is sufficient to fund the projected expenses, and, two, seek to reach and maintain American Water Works industry standards, standard cash reserves. Being in January 2024, city staff worked with Wilden Financial Services to update the study, and now brings before the council a water rate study update memorandum that defines the proposed rate increases as a result of these, those updates. The next step in the process is to adopt the notice of intent to increase the water rates and set a date for the public hearing. Staff recommends adoption of the notice of intent to increase water rates and set a public hearing date of May 21st, 2024. Once again, Tina.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So we have with us this evening Kevin Burnett with Wilden Financial Services. He has been working with us for a few months to update our five-year financial plan. I, Mayor, covered the summary just fine. I don't need to reiterate it, so I'm going to actually ask Kevin to go ahead and begin. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to see you all again. It's been about a year since I was here in person. So as Tina mentioned, and the mayor mentioned, we're to talk about the water rate study that we adopted about a year ago and where we're at today. So we got a pretty good overview of what the update is. I'll get into a little bit more detail. We've got some different options that we're going to present to you tonight and show you what the impacts of those are, and then we'll finish off with some comparisons. So when I was with you before, it was a more in-depth study last time. If you recall, we looked at different rate structures and how we wanted our customers to pay their bills. We're not getting into that level of detail this time around. What we're looking at is a revenue sufficiency, so just evaluating the revenue stream and making sure that it's sufficient to cover costs, as well as meeting the reserve requirements that were developed last time around and meet industry standards. So with that, what has changed in the last year? There's two pieces. The biggest one being our operations and maintenance costs have increased. The number-one driver for that was electricity. Electricity costs have gone up significantly from what we projected a year ago. We've also seen some increase in natural gas costs and equipment costs. So you can see in the chart there what the current study update is projecting in terms of O&amp;M costs on an annual basis and where we were at a year ago. Bearing in mind that when we did this a year ago, we had the best available information at the time. As I stand before you today, we're again using the best available information that we have today, and it's probably going to change going forward. But we're looking anywhere between four and a half percent increase in costs and almost a six and a half percent increase in costs, just since last year when we last looked at this. The second piece is the rate revenue is down about almost one and a half percent from what we had projected. Part of that is because growth didn't happen as we anticipated. It slowed down a little bit, so we didn't get the additional revenue from growth that we anticipated. And part of what we discussed last time was wanting to send a conservation signal. So there was that conservation signal that was sent, and residents did hear the signal and reduced their water use a little bit, which is good for the water resources, it's good for that department, but for Tina's group and the revenues, not so much.
It sounds like a double-edged sword.
It is definitely a double-edged sword, yes. So with that, we've got three financial plan options that we've got proposed for you tonight to mitigate those cost increases. So option one would be just to raise rates, not take any, take on any new debt, no loans, just mitigate the deficit through rates alone. The second option would be a one million dollar loan from the wastewater fund to the water fund in the upcoming fiscal year and fiscal year 2425, and then the wastewater fund would get repaid over 10 years. So that's going to increase your O&amp;M expenses a little bit from what we just saw on the previous page, because you do have to pay that loan back. The third option that we're looking at is a three million dollar loan from the wastewater fund in fiscal year 2425, again, to be repaid over 10 years. So that's going to add some additional cost to the O&amp;M as well. But at the same time, it allows that three million dollar cash infusion allows us to spread the increases more equally over the next five years, as opposed to one big increase at the beginning to try and make up the deficits that we're looking at. So it gives us a little bit more room to play with, and it's a little bit easier on the, on the ratepayers. And then in terms of the capital renewal fund, we only have one recommendation for it. So looking at option one, so this is just doing it solely through rates, no additional loans, no additional borrowings. You can see in the prior study, a year ago, we anticipated a seventeen percent increase in fiscal year 25. If we were trying to raise rates just to get the matching of the expenses, we're looking at a thirty-six and a half percent increase for this first year, and then the rate increases would tail off. So they would go down in 26, 27, 28, and 29. So it would be a big hit at the beginning and then smooth out over time. At the bottom of the chart there, you can see where we are at. So the dark blue bar is the target reserve that the city has set, and then the lighter blue or teal bar is what our actual cash reserves would be with this financial plan. And I should mention, as we look at all three of these options, you'll notice by the time we get out to fiscal year 2029, the cash position is pretty close across all three options. So we're not trying to create an option where there's a bunch more cash in the end of five years in one option. We're trying to make them as similar, apples to apples, if you will, as possible.
Kevin, can I just ask you to, sorry, to highlight why the cash reserve in year three is higher for the 60 days versus the 45 days?
Yes. Yes, that's a good point. Thank you. So that was something that we discussed last time, too. As part of trying to mitigate the rate impact to our customers, we talked about lowering the cash reserve in the first two years through fiscal year 2026, and then we would raise it up to more industry standard levels once we hit 2027. So that's why you're seeing that jump between 26 and 27. Again, it was to ease into it, if you will, and provide the city a little bit more flexibility in their rates and their ability to build up their reserves while lessening the impact to the ratepayers. So in terms of how the rates shake out, so there's the monthly fixed charge that all customers pay regardless of how much water use they have. So you're currently at thirteen dollars and seven cents for a five-eighths-inch meter. That's standard for residential customer. With the increase, the thirty-six and a half percent increase, that would go up to seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents in fiscal year 25. And then you can see the increases through the remaining years of the study period. A similar thing on the, on the volume rates. So we have the change to the rate structure that we proposed last time, so that gives us the lifeline rate at the bottom there for residential customers, the zero to three and a half, a thousand gallons. And then as your water use increases and you progress through the tiers, you pay incrementally more money for your water use. That was part of the conservation signal that we talked about before. So you can see, at the lowest tier, it would go from a dollar forty-eight up to two dollars and two cents. And then what the increases would be throughout the rest of the period there. So with that said, these are a lot of numbers, so I wanted to put some context around the, so a low-volume user in the city uses about 3,000 gallons a month. So their current bill would be twenty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Under this rate option, it would go up to twenty-nine dollars and six cents. So it would be about a seven dollar twenty-six, seven dollars twenty-five cent a month increase for the low-volume user. Your average user using 6,000 gallons a month would see their current bill go from twenty-six dollars and sixty-three cents up to thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, so about a nine dollar a month increase for the average user. And then a high user, somebody using 25,000 gallons of water a month, their bill would go from sixty-six ninety-five today to ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents, so about twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents a month under this option. So option two, so this is where we would get-
Kevin, can I, can I, I'm sorry, can I stop you real quick?
Please.
Okay, so on option one, how do you anticipate, if obviously, if rates are going up, people are probably going to try to even conserve more and more water. Are we anticipating that and the costs that are, in other words, that, you see what I'm saying?
I do.
How do we anticipate that? Because that means we're going to have to raise our prices even more for that. Is that compensating for that?
It is compensated somewhat in the increases, but as we're doing this year, where we've had to come back and scrub the numbers and revisit things, that's what we would have to do again next year as well.
Okay. Because unfortunately, I think that's what's going to happen.
Yes, yes.
And one way that we addressed it, and we did this when we brought the rate restructure to council last year, was instead of generating a majority of our revenue from the usage, we changed the fee structure to where we're generating more revenue from the fixed or flat fee. And that may be something that we might need to bring back and reevaluate as well, so.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks. Oh, Counselor Eric?
Before we go into the next option, can you explain if there's any precedent, so what is the wastewater fund?
It would be similar to what the city would have to pay if we were to issue excise tax obligations. So we're using right now a three, we used in this analysis a three and a half percent rate.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
So option two, so this is where we would get the one million dollar loan in fiscal year 2425 from the wastewater fund, repaid over 10 years. So in option one, to do, the rate increase alone was thirty-six and a half percent. So in this case, we're at twenty-six and a half percent, so a little bit of a savings from having the loan come from the wastewater fund. So then you can see where we are at in terms of the target reserve and the actual reserve. So again, we're right about where we should be at the end of five years under this option. And again, so the increases are higher than what we anticipated a year ago. So similar type things, so the current at thirteen dollars and seven cents for a five-eighths-inch meter, so it would go up to sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents in the upcoming fiscal year under this option, and then increase through 2029. Same picture for the volume rate side of things, because the rate increase itself is lower, the increase from the current dollar forty-eight isn't as high next year, but it still is a jump there. So in this case, the low-volume user at 3,000 gallons would go from twenty-one eighty-one a month to twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents a month, so about five dollars and fifty cents of an increase. The average customer at 6,000 would go from twenty-six sixty-three to thirty-three forty, so about six dollars and seventy-seven cents a month. And then the high user at 25,000 gallons would go from sixty-six ninety-five to eighty-four dollars and forty-one cents, or a seventeen dollar and forty-six cents increase in their So the third option, so this was looking at the three million dollar loan in the upcoming fiscal year from the wastewater fund. year from the wastewater fund. So in this case, we've brought that first year increase down to 16 and a half percent, so it's more in line with where we were at the prior study, but the outer years, we're seeing a little bit more of an uptick from where we were at before. So Mayor, to your point, of the three options, this would have the least shock to the large volume users, causing them to scale back more. I would suspect there probably still be, will be some conservation, but it won't be as drastic under this option as the prior two. And again, by the time we get to fiscal year 29, the target reserves are right about where they should be, which is where we were at in the prior two options as well. So looking at the rates, so it's an increase from $13.07 to $15.23 in the base charge, and then they would increase in the future years as well, assuming everything stays the On the volume side, the first here, the $1.48 would go up to $1.72, and then you can see the changes in the other rates as well. And in this scenario, so our low volume user at 3,000 gallons would go from $21.81 a month to $25.56 a month, so it's about a $3.75 increase. Your average customer would go from $26.63 to $31.17, so about a $4.54 increase. And then the high volume user would go from $66.95 to $78.14, which would be about an $11.19 increase in their monthly bill. In terms of the capital renewal fund, so previously, we anticipated four years of 20% increases and then 25% increase in 2029. The current update, the capital renewal fund is in better shape than the operating fund was as we looked at the financials. So we're recommending sticking with the 20% for five years as opposed to just four years where we were at before. So it's still an increase, but the capital renewal fund's a little bit better than where we were projecting things to be a year ago. So then those are the capital renewal fee recommendations. So they're very similar to what we saw before. Again, we've got the fiscal year 29 now, which wasn't presented before. And then in terms of how we compare to our neighbors, so I think previously, when I gave this presentation, I had some caveat slides ahead of it, just explaining how hard it is to get an apples and apples comparison to what you're doing here versus what Lake Havasu's doing, or Bullhead, or the way they operate their system and the way your system is operated. The rates that we've developed are for Kingman's specifics, so they're based on Kingman's costs, not Flagstaff's costs, not Prescott's costs. But at the same times, it's always good to know where we are in terms of our neighbors. So the orange bar is where you're at today, the $26.63, so this is for your average, single family customer. Option three, which was the lowest increases of the three, would move you up to $31.17. Option two would get you up to $33.40, and then option one at $35.63. So regardless of these three options, you're moving more towards the middle of the group of comparables here.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Of our sister cities, have any of them gone through any recent rate increases?
So Lake Havasu City just went through one last year, so they've adopted year one of their rates, and then they've adopted a similar five-year rate plan.
Okay.
Like you all did, so theirs will be increasing. Bullhead City started one last year because of the challenges of going from a private system to a public system. The costs were fairly significant, so they kind of pumped the brakes a little bit and said, can we get some grants? Can we get some assistance to try and mitigate this? So I would say they are looking for an increase. The order of magnitude at this point is a little less clear at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, Kevin.
And so then the next steps that we're looking direction for you from would be to have the public hearing on May 21st, with the new rates going into effect July 1st. So with that, I'll try and answer any further questions you might have.
Okay, come answer questions for Kevin. Of course, eye off the bat, no one likes increases. No one wants to hear any of this at all.
No, I wish I was here saying revenues came in better than expected and you don't need the increases we projected before.
And as Councilor Eric mentioned, of course, there is interest on the monies if we borrow from, that's our wastewater fund, right?
Correct.
And of course, aren't we looking at having to do wastewater increases down the road too, or how are we doing there, Tina?
So with wastewater, we don't set very many monies aside for our wastewater capital renewal projects fund. And so we, our rates in the operating fund cover much of those capital renewal projects. And so for now, over the next five years, we're able to fund our capital renewal projects and put money into the expansion projects. So by utilizing $1 million or $3 million of the wastewater fund, it would get us through the five-year plan no problem, and then we would need to, you know, reevaluate whatever that next five-year capital improvement plan looks like. But we would, currently, we are not planning to bring back any sort of rate study on the wastewater system until we can reclassify the actual classifications.
But in five years, we'll have a day of reckoning.
In five years, we may have a day of reckoning. As far as being able to sustain the loan to the water system, there are no concerns with that. There will be monies available for year six, year seven. I just don't know what that next, you know, the next plans look like, but currently, we're able to fund the wastewater CIP.
I mean, I love the idea of option two and option three, but on the same token, too, it seems like we're robbing Peter to pay.
Yeah.
So...
So Vice Mayor first, then Councilor Sayley.
I had a question. As far as option one goes, the likelihood of us needing to come back for another rate increase sooner than later, right? I mean, do we want to have to come back next year and ask for another rate increase? Go through this process again? Or do we want to try to mitigate that by finding some kind of happy medium? I don't know, I'm leaning towards option one, or I mean, option two, I'm sorry, just for that factor. I don't want to be put in this position, and it's likely that we will be. Is that...
Option one does give you the initial influx in revenues that would hopefully, as we've got laid out here, allow you to go a lot less in fiscal year 26. In terms of rate increase, we're at 5.75% next year under this option. With that being said, we were having a call with a different client yesterday, and my manager said, if my crystal ball was perfect, I'd be playing the stock market and not doing this.
Fair enough, but you're here today telling us that a year ago...
Yes, yes.
This information all changed.
It all changed, right.
So I'm trying to mitigate...
Yes, absolutely.
The possibility.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilor Sayley.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Tina this question. I was kind of surprised to see the option of borrowing money from wastewater, and I know that when I get complaints about the water bill, it's always from somebody who has sewer, because those sewer rates are higher to pay for the loans that we got to upgrade our sewer. We had to do that, it's before my time, but we had to do it. So I'm just wondering if there's a possibility to use those, if there's a surplus, is there a possibility to pay those sewer loans off faster to help get to the point where we would lower these water bills, you know, in a shorter period of time than we had really, had previously thought we would?
So there is always that option to use the reserves for that. I would not recommend using the reserves to pay off the sewer loans, because the benefit that we would get from that would be very little, or that the rate payers would get from that would be very little compared to saving the money for the big projects. We know we've got a big project, the downtown sewer outfall line, that we're trying to save money for and not have to borrow as much, and I would recommend using it for that instead of the small, if it was going to be a big benefit for the rate payers, absolutely.
So it would not be?
Not a big enough benefit.
Okay, then, but you bring up another point, that if we take $3 million and move it over, now does that put us further out to fix that sewer outfall line?
It does not.
Okay.
Okay. And of course, once again, we're having to suffer this now, and next year, it might be less if we go with option one, for example. If we go with option two or three, we might have to increase it even more. So it's painful now, or painful later, or painful, less pain next year? I don't know. Counsel, any other questions for Kevin? Councilor Walker, you look like you have a question.
No, I'm good.
Or comment. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a citizen that would like to comment on this item, and so Kevin, we can ask you to stay close. Mr. Steve Robinson.
Mayor, city councilman, and all, I don't live in the city, but I have family members and a lot of friends, and even a couple enemies that do. I have committed myself to studying government accounting, which means I'm either insane or obsessed, and I'd prefer to say the latter. First off, I want to congratulate the city of Kingman, because they produce comprehensive annual financial reports and high-quality budgets. I'm thankful that the county manager isn't here to hear me right now, but the county doesn't do a very good job. They stopped producing comprehensive annual financial reports in 2001. And the biggest issue about that is you can't borrow if you don't have a CAFER, and that means you're charging people today for future services. But I looked at the county, at the city's finances, you had over $16 million in the current cash, just in cash and equivalents, 17 and a half million. Your current liabilities is 1.75 million, so a quick ratio of 10 to 1 means you're flush with cash. Now, the question is, what is that cash all for? I don't know if there's any impending, I haven't looked at the capital improvements account to see if there's any plans, but if I understand things, when developers build, they build out the infrastructure, water lines and all that. So, but getting back to the rates for this city, it's the envy of the county. Golden Valley Improvement District, where I just bought land, for the first 6,100 gallons, it's $7 plus a $15 fixed rate. It took them six years to finally agree with me that they have 70% more water in the designation than they admitted to until last December. So I'm questioning it, just from a person who's representing people, and I will say right now, I have submitted my paperwork to run for supervisor for District Four, which means half the city will be in my district, and they will all become my constituents. And so I have, if Lord willing, that I win the election, I will be very concerned about how things, and we'll probably talk more then. But I'm just wondering, you know, I saw that there's a $3 million deficit last year, but 1.7 million of that was depreciation. So that means your actual cash flow was only 1.3 million dollars below, or, you know, above your revenues. And so I can understand why you see there's a need for the rate increase, but I think you need to look at how much cash you have in the bank, because in budgeting, you take into account existing funds that aren't committed to a project to help balance your budget. Now, we don't do that every year, because then soon we run out of money. So anyway, thank you very much for giving me the time. I just wanted to express my opinion from looking at the things and comparing you to the rest of the county, which I think is, you're doing very well. I think only the city of Mesa does better, and maybe not.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Okay, Tina.
I'd like to comment on Mr. Robinson's questions. So the water system has four different funds in it, and we are talking right now about our water operating fund and our water capital renewal fund. We do have a water expansion fund that we keep monies in there to pay for our five-year CIP, so there are definitely monies in that fund, but we are utilizing those monies for the five-year plan. And we also have a Colorado River Water Authority Fund that we are using for new sources in some of the Sacramento well siting studies, and we have monies in those, and those are restricted for particular purposes. So to Mr. Robinson's point, correct, it does appear that we have reserves in the water system as a whole, and we do, but not for the water operating or water capital renewal fund.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Yes, Councilor Eric.
Can you also comment on the depreciation comment?
I...
What was that? The, how much did you say was, 1.7 was...
Depreciation.
Okay.
And, you know, again, this city is doing a fantastic job with their pricing and rate structure. You go up even over the next five years, you're looking at still better than the rest of the county, any of the other districts, but I'm looking at that year one, option one, a 26% increase for the lowest income people. That seems like it's a little tough. You know, some of our people just really, you know, a $7 increase in their bill when they're living on $800 a month. That's my concern on that issue. Thank you. But otherwise, I really appreciate what the city is doing.
Counselor Eric, that probably didn't answer your question, but...
Yeah, we have depreciation. I'm not sure what the relationship is to the liabilities he's pointing out on that, though.
Okay. Counsel? What's your temperature? Counselor Walker, I'm going to put you on the spot.
I'm always for just ripping the Band-Aid off and paying the cost, but at the same time, I feel what Mr. Robinson's saying, that some of our people on fixed incomes, that's going to hurt them. So I think we need to look at the best option to spread it out.
Okay.
That's where I'm at. I mean, personally, I'd say rip the Band-Aid off, if you know, but I'm not writing the check for everybody.
I think Counselor Savage and I are about the same, agree with you, too, about ripping the Band-Aid off, because pay now or pay later?
And we're going to pay, why, we're going to pay interest.
To ourselves.
To ourselves, but that seems foolish. Yeah. But anyway.
Any other comments, or counsel? Because we need to come up with one of these proposals with which option we'd like to move on. It could be one, two, or three.
Is there an option to have some of these larger water users take on more of the burden to help alleviate some of that rate increase on the, on your lower-income users?
So that was something that we did discuss at the outset of this, so what we've developed and presented at this point in time is what we call an across-the-board. So if it's a 10% increase, all the rates go up by 10%. What you're talking about is certainly, excuse me, something that we could do, it's going to pull us back a little bit, because we'll have to go back and reanalyze the water data and do some more manipulations, so it would delay things a little bit. I don't know what your opinion on that, Tina, is, but...
We did talk about financial assistance, recognizing that we do have a community that are lower-income or on fixed incomes, but anytime that we're creating some sort of financial assistance for them, it is going to increase the rates, right, for other rate payers. So if that is the will of the council, we will certainly go back to the drawing board and do that, and it is an option. Okay. What does everybody think about that?
Well, and Tina, actually, I was going to ask some, just more information. Since we raised water rates last year, what is our, have we seen our delinquency rate go up?
We have seen our delinquency rate go up just slightly, though. We're still trying to recover from not doing any cuts during the 2020 and 2021 period, so we would attribute some of it to that as well. So to say it's just because of the rates, I wouldn't be inclined to say that.
Well, thanks for pointing that out, too. Okay. Okay, counsel, once again, which way do we want to move?
So is it, is it an all-in where, to Counselor Sayley's point, you know, if we could look at increasing or bumping those high-water users up, could we do a hybrid of option two to where we don't borrow as much, and yet we move those high-water users up a little bit to kind of bridge the gap?
We certainly could, yeah, that would be an option we could look at, as Tina mentioned before, too. Part of what we tried to do to insulate ourselves was increase the base charge, so we could look at putting more into the base charge for revenue stability as opposed to the volume side, but the flip side of that is that the lower-volume residents are going to take a bigger hit, because we've increased the base charge, even though that gives us more revenue stability. So we could look at increasing those upper tiers a little bit more, but to the mayor's point earlier, then that's probably going to encourage further conservation, which somewhat gets us chasing our tail a little bit in terms of what's the sweet spot in terms of increasing it on them to minimize it to the lower volume use... in terms of increasing it on them to minimize it to the, to the lower-volume users. But are we increasing it so much that we get conservation and then we're back here again a year? So the short answer is yes, there's, there's any number of different ways that we could look at this if that's the council's direction. The only other thing I would say about that, though, is that would delay the implementation of the new rates beyond the beginning of the fiscal year. So there would be some revenue loss associated with that as well.
Counselor Eric? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'd like to see what that looks like. I mean, increase, increase the high-water users just a bit and absorb some of that so we don't have to borrow as much. I'd like to see that being an option. I mean, I don't want to borrow at all either, but I don't want to put people in a position to where they're struggling even more than they are now. I don't think that's, that's fair to the good majority of our citizens and our seniors. So that's kind of where I, that's where I'm at.
Okay. Counselor Eric?
I agree with Vice Mayor Smalley that we should try to make it as least, less of a burden as possible for our residents, especially those on fixed income in conjunction with the, seeing what it would be like if we increased the toll on higher-volume users. What if we checked out commercial versus residential as well? Is that an option?
So part of what we did in the previous study was realigning so that each customer class was paying their proportionate share. So yes, that would be an option to put more of it on, on the commercial group, but that would be deferring from cost of service and we'd be artificially raising, artificially causing the commercial class or your day class to pay more than their proportionate share.
And you get to a point where you turn commercial customers away? I don't know. Counselor Ward? You always have wisdom on this kind of stuff, on monies.
This one, stop. I understand the fixed income.
Counselor member Ward, can you please use your mic?
I understand the fixed income part of it because I'm part of that group. But I, in the long run, you're going to end up paying one way or the other. I just, probably option two would be the one I was looking at. But if it were just me and not thinking of anybody else, I'd go with option one. I'd just take the hit and do it.
And be done with it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, and, right, I know we're all sympathetic, but once again, we feel the pain right now and we'll feel less pain next year because hopefully by choosing the option one, it will balance it up enough where even though we have to address it again next year, it'll be a less of an increase if we, and hopefully we won't have to increase it at all. That'd be a perfect world. But we're still going to feel pain, more than likely. I don't know.
Well, would you rather feel small incremental increases over five years or would you rather get $2 increased every year?
I would just do it all at once is what I would do.
Yeah. I mean, like...
But not all of our citizens can.
No, I understand that.
So, I mean, we, we, we need to consider that demographic and it just, it's painful. I mean, we also run the risk of delinquencies going up if, you know, people can't pay their bills. So, you know, I mean...
Well, delinquency also can be part of the sign of the economy overall, too.
Sure. And it's not great right now, so...
No, I know.
Option one to me is off the table in my mind unless we send him back. I, I concur with Counselor Ward. Option two is the one that, that I was leaning towards. But if the rest of the council wants to send him back and bump that high-user rate up just a little bit and maybe lessen what we have to take out as far as an obligation, that seems to be in my mind.
And in a spirit of compromise, because I think that's what we need to do sometimes, I would go with option two also then. Because as a, I don't want to mess with commercial rates because I think that's why I pick on our businesses also.
I agree.
You know, being, and being a business owner, a number of us are business owners in the city. So where do we, do we have a motion then? Or do you want to make a motion that we adopt number two and that way we stay on track and on calendar?
How off would we, how off would we be if we did check out the higher-volume adjustments?
And probably push it back, what, two weeks to a month at least, Tina, right?
Oh, I would say longer than that. Probably, we still have to go back through this process. So I would say probably six weeks, probably four to six weeks.
Okay, then to clarify, I'm with option two.
Okay.
We have a motion.
We have a motion then for option, do we go with option two?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of choosing option two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. And Tina, thank you. Item number six, department reports, 6A Kingman Tourism Strategic Plan. Josh, Mr. Noble, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Watkins, Vice Mayor Smalley, members of council. As you may recall, I came to you back in November and let you know that we would be conducting a tourism strategic plan study. This was part of the Arizona Office of Tourism Marketing Cooperative where Arizona Office of Tourism paid part of the cost, but they brought this to rural communities, smaller communities like us, so we could update our plans or create a new one. It was with a consultant group called Coraggio. The process involved sending out a survey to our stakeholders. And this was an online survey, so it's a survey that we sent out via email, a link. And we had 121 emails of people that were either in the hospitality industry or elected officials, city officials that we wanted to get input from. It was also an email link that anyone could email to any other stakeholders that we may have missed. We had that open for 19 days and received 23 responses, or 23 completed surveys. So there were some people that opened it up, began the surveys, but didn't complete them. So about one in six. The planning committee that was involved in this involved Economic Development Director Bennett Bradley, myself, Desiree Paulson, who is our Visitor Center Coordinator, and Brittany Gish. She is the Chairwoman of the Economic Development Advisory Committee as well as the General Manager of the Best Western Kings Inn. We had the consultants, four from Coraggio Group, one of which was a research director for the Arizona Office of Tourism in the past, another that had served in the Oregon Governor's Office. So they were varying different abilities and experiences that they brought to the group. And we also had an Arizona Office of Tourism representative in the meetings. This began with a planning orientation. This is also where we nailed down what questions we would be sending out in the survey and really kind of put together the structure of how we would go about this planning session. Then we had two four-hour lengthy sessions where we went through the results from those surveys and really tried to put together the best strategic plan, vision and mission for us as our division. So who kind of go through some of the survey input. And I'm going to try to not go reading through all of these for you because I know it's been a long night. But we, we sent the survey out. Stakeholders generally had a positive sentiment towards our office. Our net promoter score was 39%. That was positive or very good. And we did have some stakeholders that had mentioned that they hadn't heard of our office or were unsure what the tourism office was about, what its role was in the industry. We also had a sense that the community visitors could benefit from increased collaboration among the stakeholders. And a lot of the, the survey respondents said that Kingman wasn't very diverse or didn't cater to a diverse visitor audience. Now, to be clear, that's what the people that completed the survey felt. That's not necessarily what we feel or what the commission felt. So we'll talk how we can discuss, on how we can discuss and address some of these concerns later on in the presentation. Words that they believe describe the Kingman Office of Tourism's reputation, helpful, dedicated, knowledgeable, friendly. But also we had some, you know, unknown in there, people that were kind of unsure what our office did or how they can engage with the tourism office. Words that they'd like to see added to the Kingman Office of Tourism mission statement. So these are what people filled in on that question statement. And you can see united, dynamic, innovative. They'd like to see collaboration in the mission statements. So these are things that people wanted to see as we developed our strategic plan. Our net promoter score, as I said, we had 39% that were either, you know, very good or extremely good. And then we had some that were kind of in the neutral range. So those are people that could go either way. And of course, we have some people that we could definitely work on to try to integrate better into our, what we do as promoting the community. So we were good, but we definitely have room to improve. This is the diversity, equity and inclusion. As I said, this is what the survey respondents said. At the visitor center, we see people from all over the world of all different abilities, backgrounds. And so we, we know that we have people coming from everywhere with many different backgrounds. And we think that Kingman has made strides with the ADA, you know, improvements downtown and different things. And so how do we bring that message out? How do we better communicate what Kingman is and what we can offer to, to the community and to the world? Survey respondents described Kingman as historic, nostalgic and friendly. Although we did get some response that people thought it was more of a bathroom stop and a pit stop. Route 66 and the downtown are major attractions and draws to the destination. Hiking and scenic drives are also major destination quality drivers for our offerings. Culture and historic experiences and attractions were rated considerably lower, which is interesting, despite how significant people viewed Kingman as being, you know, Kingman's history appeal as being. The support structures, they saw some improvement capabilities there and we can look at those individual answers in, in later part of the presentation. Oh, and also the business hours, there were limitations of hours and we're also, will be addressing some of that later on in the presentation. So the words that they believe describe Kingman's reputation as a destination, as I said, historic, Route 66, those are big ones, nostalgic, friendly, small town. But we also had gas stop, pit stop and bathroom stop. So attractions, cultural heritage, experiences. The, you can see the big ones there on the left-hand side. Hiking, nature viewing, scenic drives, lodging, destination information and events and festivals. But that, that orange one that's a little bit to the right is center culture and historic or heritage experiences is something that we could certainly either improve on or improve the impression that the community has on what values that Kingman has for giving that kind of experience. And the tourism assets or activities that people believe would attract or have the opportunity to attract visitors. Historic downtown is a big one, as well as the visitor center, Route 66 museum, trails, hiking, breweries, wineries, distillery, historic sites and walking tours, local shopping, the ATV trails, and then also the landmarks. And then it gets a little bit smaller as we get down to the center of the arts, electric vehicle museum, the other museums, the golf course. And those get to be more niche activities, not necessarily that they don't attract everybody, but you get to more niche people that have an interest in, say, golf, that sort of thing. This was the perception of the quality of the tourism support structures in Kingman. So you can see that people felt that we had a high qual, or higher quality of public health and policies. But as we go, look at all the different areas, you know, white-finding is something that could be improved on. The inbound transportation options, those, of course, with our interchanges, those things will improve. The in-market or the bike lanes and paths and things that we're looking at creating in Kingman, those are areas that we can improve and you've already been looking at making those sort of improvements. And of course, tourism funding, we can all only operate off the funding that we have, so. Areas of focus, overall stakeholders feel that the Kingman Office of Tourism's role in marketing the destination is more important than destination management itself. There was interest in the Office of Tourism initiating, convening more stakeholders' collaboration to work towards marketing the destination. And many comments expressed a strong desire to have a seat at the table. So we have stakeholders that want to be more involved in, in what's going on. And they'd also like to, stakeholders identified that developing tourism products, experiences and events is probably the most important destination management role. They also commented on limited shopping, food and dining. Of course, that's something that as an Economic Development Department that we've been working on with Retail Coach and others to try to increase that offer. So this is the destination management. This shows the importance that they see on the different levels and then the effectiveness. And I know this looks pretty bad. Our consultants did let us know that, you know, that's not an outlier. It's pretty common that human nature, people want to see, see a certain amount of importance and they always want to see more improvements there. But this does give us something that we can look at in making our strategic plan to see how we can improve on what we're doing and try to meet what our constituents are looking for. So facilitate the development of tourism products, experience and events. And we've been working with different event promoters to try to help build more events in Kingman, as well as working with our tractions and, you know, providing things like the Fasad Improvement Program to help businesses improve the look of the, the area so that it's more, more interesting for visitors. Manage visitor volume and distribution to provide a sustainable destination experience. So this shows that different constituents feel that there may be some areas that are over tourism and some areas that maybe have under tourism. And so that's working with our constituents to identify where those areas are and how we can work to better promote areas that they feel are underutilized. Provide strategic direction and counsel for the tourism industry. I think we collect a lot of data on where people are coming from, what they're doing, both with the data that's collected at the visitor center, through the Arizona Office of Tourism, through our cellular data. And I think, you know, we have the opportunity to let businesses that are looking at relocating here or expanding here know that we have that data and they can reach out to us to get the information they need in order to make better decisions. Provide best practices to the tourism industry or sector on tourism marketing and hospitality. And so this is something we can reach out towards stakeholders, have meetings to identify what, you know, what information, resources they're looking for. Provide industry advocacy and guidance on tourism policies and issues also. That was a, on the lower end. So top challenges, limited shopping and retail is, is the highest one here. Limited brand awareness, limited dining and food and beverage, town perception. As you get off on the other side, those are a little bit lower on the challenge spectrum. But definitely workforce housing, you know, nightlife entertainment are things that were listed as a concern. So all together with this information from the surveys and working with our consultants, they gave us an overall strategic plan that is just a one-sheeter so we can look at everything all on one page. And then from that, we developed areas of focus. I'm kind of going to, I'm going to go through these. You don't have these slides, but just so we can look at each component individually and start trying to look at that whole sheet and figure out what that means. So from this, we, we used information and keywords that people had put out in the, you know, the word clouds in their suggestions to build our vision and our mission. So we came up with a vision to explore, explore Kingman, to feel the rush of discovery and modern nostalgia in a city with small-town charm and big adventures, iconic moments and vibrant cultural experiences. I think people talked a lot about culture. They talked a lot about it being a small community, but there being a lot of opportunities and a lot of things to see and unique landscape with scenic drives. So we tried to pull that into the vision to identify what our vision is for what we want to see our Kingman tourism landscape be. And then the mission is we drive economic growth and community pride for our residents through tourism promotion, destination development and collaboration. We heard that they wanted destination development, collaboration definitely with our stakeholders. And they had different areas that they wanted to see growth. So that's what we built into our mission statement. The position for Kingman was a convergence of landscapes with histories seen nowhere else, small-town amenities with access to major cities and landmarks in the heart of some of America's most iconic natural and built sites, a place to experience freedom of movement through outdoor recreation, driving Route 66 or taking the vast and unique landscape. A lot of this, again, is kind of pulled out of the information that was provided in the surveys. So areas of focus, tourism promotion is a major one. That's obviously what we're here for. But we, we wanted to find out how can we measure the success of those and then what sort of initiatives could we build in to meet those. So increase revenue per available room by 3% annually, increase in visitor tra- traffic downtown by three percent, and we can use our, our cellular data to track that so that we've got some like numbers looking forward, increase in organic social media followers by ten percent per year. So initiatives, support the city's initiative to improve first impressions by eliminating neglected properties, creating more appealing city entrances and thoroughfares, and advocating for cleanups or beautification projects near city access points. Collaborate with content creators on social media to build platform-specific marketing assets, and participate in the Arizona Office of Tourism's marketing co-op. Destination development is the second area of focus. So increase in attraction activities for select product development opportunities, increase in events supported. So the initiatives that we had outlined here is to establish an internal program to attract select tourism products, collaborate with Parks Department to bring a tourism perspective to amenity and event development, expand visitor center hours, and establish a sustainable funding mechanism for the art and public places. This visitor center hours component, you know, they talked about businesses not being open later into the evening and thought, we can't tell businesses what to do, but we can start by providing an example and doing that at the visitor center, and then hope that that helps to increase the culture of staying later in the downtown area, staying open later in the downtown area. And then the final area of focus, collaboration, and we would measure this by improving year over year stakeholder sentiment scores by one point. So all of those scorings that you saw where they said this is how important we feel this different component is versus how effective you are, we want to see that gap close. And so this would be, that's the measure of success that we would use. In year one, establish monthly stakeholder meetings by the end of the year, and then year two, increase attendance at tourism stakeholder meetings. So this is really trying to work on collaboration with our stakeholders, increase that level of attendance. Initiatives, establish the Office of Tourism as a tourism authority and resource for the commune community by providing resources to the industry. We have a lot of those resources, make those available on our website, we already do on our economic development, some of the, some of the items, but we can make more of that information readily available so that people can find it and access that information more easily. Convene monthly tourism stakeholders' meetings and create cooperative opportunity for tourism businesses. So we're looking in our upcoming budgets to try to create a cooperative marketing opportunities that our businesses can participate in so that they can better utilize the, not only the value, but maybe some of the funding to better promote not only them, but Kingman in general, to drive more traffic to our community. And so that's the overall Kingman economic strategic plan that we're looking at, and what, what our next step is. We, we had this plan presented to the Economic Development Advisory Commission earlier this month, and we're bringing it to you now so that you have a chance to look at it and review it, and then we do, will be bringing the economic development strategic plan back to council for some items that you'd asked to bring back in a previous meeting along with this material, and then we'd integrate that into the overall plan and then ask for your input and/or adoption. Then next year, we would come back, look at those stakeholder scores, and then we'd revise this so that we can continue moving into the future. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Noble? Quick, just one quick thing, you've mentioned starting leading it as an example, visitor center hours, what are our hours right now?
Currently, we're open from nine to four, seven days a week. We'd like to increase that at least by an hour each side, possibly in the summer, increase it by two hours at the end of the day, and that's something that we're looking at putting in our budget request. We think that we would offset those additional costs by the additional sales that we would make in the gift shop, because we have people coming into the Tesla charging stations at the drive-through shield, more people that are coming in to see, you know, the improvements we've been making, and so we just want to try to meet that need and open up the visitor center so we can meet more people.
Okay, good ideas. Yes, councillor.
Just a comment, Josh. I'm one of the guys that didn't finish the survey. When you went into that survey, you couldn't, you couldn't go through and look at the overall survey. A lot of times, when I look at a survey, if I can go through and look at the whole thing first, because sometimes your one answer affects another, I, I usually read it through and then go back. I, I just got disgusted and quit, and, and no reflection on you at all. I'm just saying, that's the way I am, and, and a lot of other people, I think, are the same way. You want to look through the survey and see what you're, see what you're looking at overall before you answer the questions, because question number one, you can have, again, in a different form on question number ten, and, and your answers don't come out anywhere near the same. That's my only criticism of the survey.
That's good feedback, I appreciate that.
And, and I did start it, I didn't finish it. I apologize for that.
Mayor.
Thank you, councillor, yes, vice mayor.
I would just like to know who you're identifying as your stakeholders, so if you could just provide that information. I want to make sure that everybody has a seat at the table, so, you know, culture was something that was mentioned in here often, so I just, I just want to know who your stakeholders are, and you don't have to list them tonight, just if you can get that information to me.
In, in general, I, I can, I can, I can send you the list that we sent all the surveys out to, but essentially, all of our hospitality partners in lodging, in dining, attractions, many of the small boutique shops, and then we had our commissioners, our elected officials, event promoters that put events on the area, so it was, like I said, it was about a hundred, it was a hundred and twenty-one, but I'd be happy to send you the list so that you could identify, you know, maybe who we're missing and who we can reach out to in the future.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, yes, councillor Saly.
Sorry, did you send that out to Kingman Main Street?
I did, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no others, Josh, thanks again for that report.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Item six B, City of Kingman Drinking Water Regulatory Overview. Mr. Keelan Yarborough.
We can do better back there.
Yeah, he's not doing better now, is he, by standing and paying attention?
Just paged out.
No, was he? That name was familiar, but I don't know. We can do.
That's the first one, right? Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you guys here tonight. If I can take a quick minute just to belabor you with a bit of my background or bio, I've spent the last twenty-five years of my career in public service, twenty-two years in water and wastewater as a state accredited operator, and currently serving you and the community in an administrative operational role as the Assistant Public Works Director over utilities. For the past twelve years of my career, my team and I have been directly responsible for managing two AZPT's permits, three O�re protection permits, and all regulatory compliance schedules associated with safe, compliant, successful distribution, collection, and treatment of water and wastewater. Needless to say, I'm certainly more comfortable in a servant leadership role than I am standing before you at this podium, however, I appreciate the opportunity to illustrate what our team does to provide each of us with the safest product we can possibly deliver. In this case, the product just happens to be water, which is certainly one of the, one of, if not the, most regulated industries. With that, I just want to preface the PowerPoint presentation with, with this. This is specific to City of Kingman wells, not privately owned wells within the service boundaries of, of the Kingman water system. The Safe Drinking Water Act is what guides us, specifically federal law that ensures quality of America's drinking water. Under the SDWA, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPS, sets standards for drinking water quality and oversees the state's localities and water suppliers who implement those standards. More specifically, it's in, in federal regulations, it's forty CFR. Safe Drinking Water Act was originally passed by Congress in nineteen seventy-four to protect public health by regulating the nation's public drinking water supply. The law was amended in eighty-six, and again in ninety-six, and requires many actions to protect drinking water and its sources, rivers, lakes, reservoirs, springs, and groundwater wells, and for the purposes of this presentation, we're talking specifically about groundwater State primacy, the Safe Drinking Water Act includes a requirement that EPA establish and enforce standards, MCLs, which are maximum contaminant levels, treatment techniques, monitoring that public drinking water systems must adhere to. States and Indian tribes are given primary enforcement responsibility for public water systems in their state if they meet certain requirements. This is just some, some of the primacy language continued. Some of the major requirements for receiving primacy include have, have regulations for contaminants regulated by the National Primary Drinking Water Regulations that are no less stringent than the regulations provided, I'll shorten that, or I won't try to pronounce that word, they're promulgated by EPA, ADEQ. Have a program to certify laboratories that will analyze water supplies required by the regulations, ADHS, and have a laboratory that will serve as the state's principal lab that is certified by the EPA or ADHS. What is regulated? Microorganisms or bacteria, disinfectants, specifically feschlorine, disinfectant byproducts, inorganic contaminants, fluoride, which falls under that, I think, which kind of spurred this whole conversation. These are collected triannually as outlined by federal and state compliance schedules, and then, of course, organic contaminants, pesticides, herbicides, petroleum derivatives, and then radionuclides. Primary contaminants of concern for Arizona, nitrate, fluoride, which in our case, and we can get into this a little bit deeper, but is naturally occurring, so we don't add or have the ability to add fluoride to our drinking water. Arsenic, naturally occurring, total coliform bacteria, naturally occurring, and disinfectant This is a table that has a couple definitions, which we talked about at the beginning of the, of the presentation. MCL is for maximum contaminant level, and then, of course, MCLG is maximum contaminant level goal. These are state, or, excuse me, these are provided by EPA, and then, of course, adopted by ADEQ at the state level. If you looked at, so again, fluoride is part of our IOC sample collection, and we do those at specific locations or what we call entry points to our distribution system on a triannual basis. So these particular results, the one point eight milligram per liter was reflected in last year's, the twenty-twenty-two Consumer Confidence Report, and then I went back and did some research at some other locations as well, and those are listed below. So the one point eight is a single sample high that was collected at a specific spot within the distribution system. I think, you know, you could certainly make the argument that overall, the distribution is substantially less. Again, that was a, a single sample high from a particular location. This is a, this is actually a copy or an excerpt from our, from last year's Consumer Confidence Report, and this shows the single sample high of, of the fluoride or fluoride that we collected at a specific entry point. And DEQ provides the language, you'll see there listed under typical source, erosion of natural deposits, water additive which promotes strong teeth, we don't do that, discharge from fertilizer and aluminum factories, we don't have those, and the, the other two, so with the exception of adding or dosing a distribution system with fluoride, the other two are more common in surface water applications, which we're not. Public notification rule, drinking water compliance assistance. So the public notification rule applies to all public water systems and ensures that customers know if there's a problem with their drinking water. PWSs must issue a public notice if any of the following apply: violates an EPA Safe Drinking Water Act or state regulations, which would mean exceeding a maximum contaminant level or action level, fails to test its water, does not conduct routine sampling or testing, has been granted a variance, use of less costly technology, has been granted an exemption, more time to comply with new regulations, water disease outbreak occurs, unregulated contaminant data becomes available. I just wanted to touch on that, because if we did have an MCL for, for any particular sample or constituent that we sample for, there's strict guidelines as far as public notification goes, and not only that, you know, not only, I guess, and, and those guidelines are typically, typically require us to notify the public within a very short timeframe, typically under twenty-four hours. These were some frequently asked questions that had came up, you know, both, both locally, and then there's a, an EPA fact sheet or question and answer sheet on their website that, it's about a ten-page document, but it's got a lot of Q and A stuff on there that answers a lot of questions, some of them, I didn't include all of them on here, but again, what form of fluoride is used to fluoridate King's, Kingman's water supply? Again, we do not fluoridate, we don't even have the ability to fluoridate our water system. Again, it's naturally occurring. How much money is budgeted for the fluoridization of Kingman's water supply on an annual basis? There is none, because we don't. And then, you know, what person or persons are responsible for the implementation and monitoring of Kingman's fluoridated program? I've got a lengthy response there, but we, we don't, we don't have a fluoridating program, so. Just to recap, nineteen eighty-six, guidelines from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA established maximum allowable concentration of four milligrams per liter of fluoride in public drinking water systems to prevent adverse effects from fluoride exposure such as bone disease, excuse me. A review of this regulation is currently a low priority for the EPA. Or, I know you're getting tired of hearing me say this probably, but fluoride containing Kingman's drinking water is naturally occurring. The city of Kingman operates a compliant water system in accordance with EPA and ADEQ regulatory guidelines outlined in the Safe Drinking Water Act, forty CFR, and the city of Kingman follows strict compliance reporting and sampling guidelines outlined and required by EPA and ADEQ. Should an MCL be exceeded, public notice guidelines would be provided in accordance with the public notification rule. Questions?
Thank you, Keelan. Any questions for, for Ms. Yarborough?
I do too, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Rick, and then councillor Walker.
I noticed a lot of your samples were twenty-twenty-two. Do you have anything more recent or anything coming up that's more?
So we'll have a, we'll have some that are due in twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
And then, of course, another round that will be taken in twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, and then my next question was, is there a threshold before you hit MCL that triggers action? I raised my eyebrows when I saw the numbers creeping up on chromium and nitrate. They're like sixty-two out of a hundred, and what was it, seven out of ten? Seven point eight out of ten?
There, so for each constituent, unless it's what we refer to as a UCMR, EPA requires us to participate in UCMR data collection, which is unregulated contaminants, and those are to help regulatory agencies determine thresholds for constituents that aren't currently being, or aren't currently assigned an MCL. I wouldn't be able, without looking at EPA or DEQ's compliance table, I wouldn't be able to recite those MCLs to you, but I'd be happy to get them to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councillor Walker.
So in general, are the city of Kingman's drinking water safe?
Very safe, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Our fluoride level is not over the top, we are well under.
It is, you're absolutely right, you know, and typically, when EPA and DEQ
You know, and typically when EPA and DEQ sets MCLs or MCLGs, right, there's a safety factor that's, that's involved with those, they're certainly probably, well, they, not probably, they are going to be on the conservative side, so we're, we're not anywhere close to that. You know, like I say, the one, we did have a single sample high of, of one point eight, which I think stirred a lot of these questions. And then there's this whole other side to fluoridization, right, that I won't even get into because that's not my area of expertise, but like preventing minimum, minimum dosing amounts for dental carries and stuff like that. And there's a lot of other information out there, you know, through the American Dental Association and stuff like that. But as far as drinking water is concerned, EPA and DEQ, we are substantially below any of those MCL or MCLGs.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Kealan. I had requested this because there had been several calls to the public addressing this, so I thought it was important to get that out into the public. So you did a fantastic job. I just have a couple of follow-up questions. So when was the last time, if ever, did Kingman have a EPA water violation? Do you know of anything where we had to notice?
You know, no, no MCL violations come to mind. We're required to pull fifty back tea samples, what we call back tea samples, they're total coliform samples. And I can remember a number of years ago, I'd be hard pressed to tell you exactly when, but where there, there was a positive total, total coliform, and then you've got a, you know, DEQ requires you to go upstream, downstream, original site location, and to the source wells to pull samples to see if you can identify the source. Thing you got to remember is, though, when you're pulling those type of samples in an uncontrolled environment, which all fifty of those locations that we pull are, are outside, right, or at a hose bib or something like that, right? So you lose some control. So something as, as simple as a windy day can influence those. But to your question, not to get too far off track, I don't recall us ever having an MCL violation.
Okay, perfect. And then my, my last question is, is it, is it valid to request the city of Kingman to put in a filtration system, to add it to the water treatment? You know, how, it's got to be costly, there, there should be some ways that individual water users could protect themselves.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. There's some over-the-counter filtration system that you can buy. You want to make sure that you purchase the ones that are dedicated. If fluoride is your concern, then you want to make sure that that's the filter you're purchasing because, for instance, there are some out there, you know, the ones that you put in your fridge and stuff like that, they remove certain contaminants or constituents, you know, but not, they may not be specific to fluoride. So I think, you know, they're, they're certainly out there and available over the counter, you know, that you can install in your home. For the city, you know, the, this is, I guess, the best guess in my professional opinion, if you will, it would probably cost the city tens of millions of dollars to install some sort of RO system or nanofiltration or ionic removal. There's also some, and I'm not super familiar with these methods, but there's also some methods out there where you can chemical dose, but then that adds a whole nother layer. So you add something to remove it, and then you've probably got to filter it anyway.
Right. So if somebody was still concerned after hearing your presentation that our water is as safe as it can be and being regulated, they could go out and purchase something that they could utilize at home to, you know, give them some peace of mind?
They absolutely could.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for addressing that. Appreciate that.
I was going to say, did you want to raise water rates some more or what?
No.
I know, I know. I'm, I'm just teasing, Vice Mayor. Any other comments or questions for Kealan? Okay, Kealan, once again, thanks for the report.
Thank you.
Now, I noticed you did, you did mention collected for inorganic contaminants, which is why this discussion came up with fluoride. It's collected triannually, so every three years?
That's correct. Yes, sir. And, and as you'll notice by the, the previous table, right?
I was going to ask you about that.
They're not all on the same triannual cycle, right? We've got some that were pulled in seventeen, some that were pulled in eighteen, and that's all based off, you know, what DEQ or EPA requires or what that schedule has, has worked out to be in our compliance.
Well, and you'd also mentioned four different locations, so all those three dates in twenty-one, I was thinking are four different occurrences or different areas. So that's why I was thinking why there were four twenty-one dates.
Yeah, you're right. So we have, don't quote me on this, but we probably have somewhere close to ten EPDSs, as we refer to them as, or entry point to distribution system, where we're required to pull these samples. These would have been, so for instance, in twenty-one, you know, we had three samples that were pulled from three separate EPDSs, but, so you may have, you know, like in twenty-one, we may have pulled from three, three separate EPDSs, and then in, in twenty-two, we'll pull from, you know, maybe it's another three or four.
Okay.
Whatever we've got to pull to meet that triannual requirement and, and, and still keep our rotation with ten different EPDSs.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Kealan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that is end of our department report. No, we actually have one more, I'm sorry. Six C, conditional use permit process. Sean, we're going to pick on you again.
Yes, you are.
Can I see Rob making his way up here? Or no? Okay.
Yeah, come on up. You can have it. This one's yours, buddy.
I know. That's why they love me.
You do. Yeah. Never don't love me.
What? Trying to get rid of this stuff. Oh, I remember. He taught me that one time.
Let me just.
Yeah, go ahead. I think he's doing it.
Because you're not doing it right. Oh.
I don't like it.
That's it.
We are running late.
I started laughing, I'm like, I wonder if he had to jump off the balcony.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening.
Nothing to see here.
I apologize, I'm not really up to date on what was supposed to be brought here, but I think we're here to talk about the conditional use permit processes, and I think the question was, why do these, why do conditional use permits not come to council? I'm, I'm not sure what the question was, so if you, if, if you want to.
Yes, Counselor Sealy.
Okay, so we had previously talked about changing, possibly changing that and, and making it so they, we do it the old way, where it goes to P and Z.
Okay.
And then comes to the city council for final approval. So I don't know how the council feels. I think that we all were here, except for you, sorry, but we used to approve them, and now they're just solely approved at P and Z, and it had come up before, and I wanted to see if the council, if we had a majority that wanted to change it back to the old way.
Okay.
Of getting council approval.
I, I think going through what the old process was to what the new process was would be good. I put together a very brief, pretty much of what the old process is. So you, the applicant would submit their application, it would go to application review by the Planning and Zoning Division. If it's complete, you would go down to step three, which there would be two separate public hearings. The first one would be to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they would make a recommendation, and then it would come to council, and council would make their, their final recommendation. There's, there's been, in the new process, so in, in the new process, and what, what was, the idea behind this new process is, the majority of the time when public outreach would occur, it was because they, the public would say they weren't notified of anything, and so they would come to the council meetings, they wouldn't come to the planning and zoning meetings, they would come to the council meetings, and that's when we would hear all of anything that's being opposed for the conditional use permit. So, and, and this is something that's happened, been happening throughout cities all over. So what happens now is there's a pre-application review, a part of that pre-application review is where we advise the citizen who's applying, they have to do public outreach on their own. They have to send out letters to any property owner within three hundred feet of, of where they're wanting to make this change, as well as they have to hold two open public meetings and advertise for those meetings by putting signs out of a certain size on the property that's in question and being questioned for the conditional use permit. So that's what we call our citizens' review process. So that has to happen and complete, and that has to be done prior to them even applying to us. So what that does is that gives the applicant the ability to work with their neighbors. If there's something about their project that the neighbors don't like, then they can try to address those before they even get to us, right? From there, they submit their application, it goes to the one public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that, that's heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they actually have the ability to approve that, right? In the event that it's not approved, the next step is for them to appeal, which is something we just do automatically. If Planning and Zoning Commission denies it, we bring it to the council, even if the applicant doesn't really want to, right? If they're just done, we don't want to file for an appeal, we do that anyway. So then it comes to council for that final decision. So those, those are the differences between, between the two. Kind of cut out council, but reasoning for cutting out council on those is because we feel like we're getting the input from the public that we were getting at the council meeting that delayed it, makes the process faster and easier. However, if council has a different idea, we definitely are, are willing to take suggestions and make changes.
Counselor Eric.
How long does step two take? And then can you go back one slide so I can see the old process? But number two on the new process was my question.
So as far as in comparison to each other, they're, they're essentially the same. All the same information has to be presented, except for in the new process, they're providing us comments of anybody that came to that public meeting.
Do they have to be within a certain time to advertise for time?
So I believe it's thirty days prior to maximum, fifteen days minimum.
Okay. So Sean, you said the new process actually streamlines it?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Sealy, I know you'd mentioned what precipitated, anyway, because obviously, I'm sure a constituent asked you about it.
Well, no, it's in discussions that we've had with the changes.
Okay.
After we adopted the new policies. And I'm not suggesting removing the, the meetings and the way it looks, you know, the way we're, we're currently doing it, I'm just suggesting that the count, that the council gets the final say. Because conditional use permits have a great impact, and we, as the elected officials, have that responsibility to our constituents. I greatly respect our Planning and Zoning Commission, I think they do a great job, they are volunteers that we, you know, put on the board, and I think that our voters would probably feel more comfortable having the electeds who have that accountability to be making the decisions for the CUPs.
Okay, well, back to the new process, doesn't the final step is city council, right?
No.
No. Only if it, only if the Planning and Zoning Commission denies the conditional use.
Okay, I misunderstood, I apologize.
So that commission.
I see what you mean.
Has the ability to approve a conditional use permit without us ever seeing it.
Okay.
And there are still a lot of complaints from constituents that they did not read it in paper, that, that, that these meetings were going to be held. That process is still not perfect.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I just had a question, on the conditional use permits, what's the typical timeframe for granting a typical or a conditional use permit?
Staffed or not staffed? I'm just kidding. It, it, it kind of really depends, so basically.
No, I'm saying, once it's granted.
Once, once it's granted?
Yeah.
So it, it, it goes, it goes into effect ten days after being voted on. And, and the reason why we have to wait that ten days is there's an appeal process, right? So when, when it goes, somebody has ten days to appeal whether or not the conditional use permit moves forward or not.
I guess my question, I need to ask it a different way. Once granted a conditional use permit, does it expire?
No.
Okay.
Well.
Because I think some of them do.
Yes. So if, if they have, if they have not started construction within one year.
Okay.
Then the conditional use permit expires, but we do have the ability for a time extension of up to another year.
And then if they do anything to the property during the time they have the conditional use permit, that can also affect whether.
What do you mean by do something?
It gets revoked or extended?
So if, if, if they've, if they've started construction, right, then the conditional use permit is there and in place until completion and for the rest of the, the life of the land until something changes to where it's no longer being used under that conditional use permit is being used.
Okay.
Right? So they have a year to start construction.
Yeah, and I understand that part. So what would trigger a conditional use permit to not be effective?
Them not complying with it.
Okay.
Right? So, so once it, once it goes into effect, it's there forever, however, for whatever reason, council does have the ability to say, oh, hey, this is a problem, we need to meet and discuss that.
So we do have the ability to revoke it?
We.
As council?
We.
So, yeah, so I'm just trying to get it, I'm just trying to get, once the authority.
If there is a violation, if they're not following the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Right? But in that, there are stipulations of, of what they have to comply with.
Okay. And that's done by complaint? If, if to qualify a violation?
It would be done by complaint, yes.
Okay.
And if it's a violation of the conditional use permit, we do then have the ability to revoke that.
Okay. Just trying to, just trying to get an idea of how permanent it is, yeah, so. And, and it was more for the public, so thank you for the exercise.
Yeah, I had to think there for a second.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, you know, I, I, I tend to agree with Counselor Sealy on this. I mean, they are, because they are so serious and they get granted with, you know, regulation and, you know, it, it is something special, you know, for, for the property owner. I lean towards going back to at least having the council have a say, you know, planning and zoning, giving a recommendation. The timeline is the same in either process about, so I don't know, how does the rest of council feel?
I think it adds probably about four to six weeks.
It, it absolutely could.
Councilmember Walker, can you use your microphone, please?
I'm sorry, it was on. I think it would add four to six weeks, and I mean, we normally go with, normally, not always, but we normally go with the commission's findings. You know, we do hear the appeals if it's denied. You know, I'm, I'm kind of open on this, I mean, I think, you know, we are the electeds, they are appointed, I get that. We're definitely the ones that get the first phone calls.
Actually, Counselor Ward, did.
My only question was, is there a way to speed up the time between when the zoning board meets and when it comes to us? Because that's what adds to the time, isn't it, Sean? Getting it on the agenda and getting it to us?
Yes, and usually the way that works is, what we try to do is when we do what we would do, and we do this with some, some other things that do have to come before you as well, is when we do public notice for the public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, at the same time, we do the public notice, most times it's for the next council meeting. So that's, that's if everything is working smoothly, right? And so it, it could be up to four weeks, most time it would, it would be probably a week, one week to two weeks that it would add on to the timeframe, so.
Well, if we can get P and Z meeting more often.
Yes.
That would speed it up.
So I, I do know that's something that's on, on, on the board for discussion.
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, that's being considered, that's something that's out on the table is to have these commissions meet more often, especially P and Z, because of the timing. So.
Counselor Eric.
Just to kind of wrap my head around it, just, and get a range, correct me if I'm wrong, you've only had sixteen of these applications in the last three years?
Correct. So six, sixteen applications, however, only nine of them have been for actual conditional use permits, right?
Correct me if I'm wrong, um, you've only had sixteen of these applications in the last three years?
Correct, so six sixteen applications, however, only nine of them have been for actual conditional use permits, right? The remaining.
Does that sixteen include any denials, or is there more?
No, every, we have, none have been denied.
None have been denied.
No.
Sixteen total, five, you said, were reference to others?
They were in time, they were time extensions. So somebody didn't start construction within the the one-year mark. And so they needed more time because of material issues, because of
So you're down to eleven.
Correct.
Unique
Correct.
Applications in the last three years.
Yes.
How many are commercial versus residential?
They're all commercial.
Okay.
And and I will say the majority of have have been for storage facilities, because in order for a storage facility to be built in the city period, no matter where it is, it requires a conditional use permit.
And why is that?
Um, because it's very hard to regulate in the commercial zones, right? So there there could be a certain area to where, like, if you have, say, a group of restaurants and somebody wants to come build the storage units right in the middle of those restaurants, that wouldn't be conducive to that particular area. So it kind of kind of leaves some leeway for discussion on stor- on storage facilities.
Okay, so would you say that based on track record, CUPs don't tend to be time intense, time intensive, sensitive? And also, is there something that you could do in P and Z code that would just eliminate ninety percent of your requests?
We we can, but my professional opinion is it's not a good idea to do that.
Okay.
I just had one final question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
How many of these have been approved under the new process versus the old process? All of them?
All these, this is, those those are the numbers since April sixth of twenty twenty-one.
All right.
And I would say all of those have been within, the majority of them have been, they were in, they started in the year twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
So on the one hand, we all, working with the contracting community, we are, we want to expedite the process. We've talked about that in a number of city council meetings before. So going back to the old way actually is going to slow it down, but on the same token, too, we are elected officials and represent our constituents, so. What uh, which direction we want to go on this one?
I would just, if you look at the list and how many of those have come back to ask for extensions and how many actually went to construction, usually the CUP is very early on, before they even start the project, because they don't necessarily know that if they buy this property, they're going to be able to do their their project on it. So it's sort of a fact-finding mission of sorts. They're they're not even ready to put a shovel in the ground.
Okay.
So it isn't like what we've been talking about, you know, to get these um, commercial buildings through the process of getting permits and being built. This is so early on that a couple of weeks isn't going to have that kind of impact.
Yeah.
And again, I just think it's important that because the voters or the constituents are able to vote us in, vote us out based on our decisions, but once we appoint somebody to P and Z, they're there for several years. And you, we we don't, we have never removed anyone from P and Z as far as I know. And it would take, you know, a majority vote of the council to pull somebody off or pull several people off if they were going rogue, which would never happen. I'm just saying, we have the accountability to our constituents as as being elected. And I think it's really important for something that could have a great impact to our our city and our economy that we would have the final say, even if it takes a couple more weeks.
Good points. Well, it sounds like then we are, most of us are leaning towards going back to the old process, and we would give Sean that direction.
So I I have a couple, couple of questions on that. Are we wanting to go back to the old process without the citizens review process? We want to keep the citizens review? We just want to add council as that? And now do we, and it'll be something I'll have to get with the attorney's office on. I I don't know that that second final decision, do we want that to be open hearing or just approval of what?
No, it, step six would be city council, you know,
Okay.
Makes, has a no, a public hearing, makes final decision.
Okay, perfect.
Counsel, it sounds like we're good with that?
As long as we're not slowing things down. We can have it the next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Sounds good. Sean, you have your orders.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Twice, two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Our deputy city manager, Tina Mullin.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counselor Savage?
No.
Counselor Ward? Counselor Sealy?
Um, I just wanted to clarify, I, you know, the last meeting I had, uh, mentioned the city council and the city manager having a booth at the May first Friday as a way of introducing the new city manager to the public. And then I had just found out, and and Tina also got the same information, that 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 big first Friday has been pushed back to June now. So I just want to let the council know that um, we could look at doing it in June. And then we also talked about doing a town hall, and maybe that's in May, or that's in July, or something like that to work around that. But just being able to um, get out into the public with the new uh, city manager and and um, get him familiar with our constituents.
Okay, Counselor Eric.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing tonight.
The only thing I wanted to add add on to is, you know, we, it's come up today, tonight, it was yesterday in our work session, too, about public particip- particip- participation. And encouraging people to go to the our city website and playing with it. And for example, there's some surveys that are available right now. And it's important, because we talk about our constituents having a say in everything. If they fill out these surveys, that helps us give us more information on what we shall be doing. And so I just want to encourage our citizens to take the time to go onto the website and do that, and uh, fill out those surveys. Uh, the report that we had tonight from Josh, the participation was horrible, so.
To that point, may I say?
And I'm guilty, too.
There is a special tab for the general plan right now, so
Yes, that's the one.
That's a really important um, one that is right there on the on the main page. It's on, it has its own tab, so go have a say in how the town is mapped out and what goes where. It's very important, planning, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Counselors? Okay. Uh, item number nine, executive session. Item nine A, KX Ventures DEA. The city council may go into executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero three A three to discuss and provide direction regarding KX Ventures Development Agreement. Uh, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, what?
Five-minute break?
You want a five-minute break? Also, everybody here in chambers and who's been viewing, watching, we appreciate your participation tonight. Have a good evening, be safe going home.
We're good. Once again, thanks to staff and fellow council members for being here and staying around late tonight. We are back from executive session and we are adjourned. Have a good evening.